Good, okay, awesome. We'll call the July thirteenth budget workshop agenda to order and we'll have Commissioner Banksen do the prayer and the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we gather before you today and again, we thank you for your grace and your goodness to us as a people. We ask for your wisdom as we look over the information before us today. Help us to make the great, the best long-term decisions that we can for the people of our city that we serve. We thank you for every one of our departments that have worked so hard on this budget and we ask you, Father, to just direct our thoughts. We give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Chief? Do the fire first, police second, then IT will pull up the rear for us. Chief Willems?
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and members of the public. I'm gonna present the 2020-2021 fire budget presentation. It has some PowerPoint slides to go over with you guys. First, just kinda wanna go over our updated vision statement. We updated our vision, mission statement this year. The vision of the proper fire environment, provide best, all hazards, all risk, emergency response within the community, and establish standard of care for its citizens, visitors, and stakeholders. Our mission statement's quite lengthy, so we can paraphrase that one, so we don't have to sit here all night, but you know, our basic thing, we wanna make sure that we knew, everyone knows that we exist to care for, protect, and serve our community. One of the big things that we wanna emphasize moving forward is a risk statement. That's something that's, we haven't had in the past, but what do we really need to look at? And when it comes to budget and when it comes to things like this, we really wanna look at our risk. Ever-changing threats and risks to the community, we know that these are constantly changing as we've learned very well this year. You know, we wanna prioritize human life, responder safety, personnel property, and environment in these assessments. And by identifying these threats, we're able to provide you guys with the best information possible to make the critical decisions we need to be moving forward. Again, NIST is one of the big, obviously, people out there, saying, if we can get ahead of this, we can get, make his department of resources deployed to match the risk levels inherent to the dangers of the community. Definitely scientifically, it's demonstrated that it will, it's less vulnerable for the, throughout the negative outcomes and such. So much, we believe it so much, we actually made it a policy. So this is one of our new SOGs, how it's laid out, and you know, that's what we wanna emphasize with our staff. Last year, we ran 8,876 calls total. I mean, you see, we're obviously trending up, you know, different things like that. One of the biggest things we wanted to look at when we're doing this is how statistics are actually kept and how they're measured. One thing we realized going through some of this stuff is, we actually weren't reporting our numbers correctly to the National Fire Incident Reporting System. This is a big database that actually, we pull lots of different data from, that we can actually use to apply for grants, many of that, you know, those sorts of things. So you can see, the fireside, we're actually, we're reporting our correct numbers. So those numbers are true and accurate. When you look at the EMS side, and this is actually straight out of Florida Fire Chiefs' magazine, so it's something that popped up and I wanna make sure that we know about. On the EMS side, it said we only ran 750 calls. Well, that's a big red flag. Okay, we ran well over 8,000 calls, so there's something, something wasn't jiving, so we wanna make sure that we corrected that. When you really look at it, we should, instead of being number 153, we should be right around number 30 in this state. That's a big difference, especially when you're looking for, you know, funding sources and things like that, how we, you know, how can we gather that information? So effective January 1st of this year, we actually began reporting all our incidents to the National Fire Incident Reporting System. This has really helped us look at, take granular looks at what we're really running, how we're running it, where we're running it, and different things like that, and gives us, spits out a lot of good information for us. So what we did this year is pulled from January 1st up until last Thursday, because I was working on this last Thursday, to be honest with you. We wanna make sure that we get you the most accurate number. So thus far this year, we've ran 3,585 calls. Of those, 78% are EMS-based, which is about normal, you know, for the fire emergency services. 22% is fire-related calls. A little hard to see here, but this actually breaks down each station, where we're actually running the calls to. So Station 1 being 1,342 of the calls, whereas Station 6 only 117 calls thus far. Next also is the percentages. You can see Station 1, again, are higher, highest percentages of where we're running our call volume. 2, 3, 4, right around the same average. When you get to 5, a little bit lower, 12%. Station 6 is still at 3.2% of our total calls. So what does that mean? Is again, is our breakdown of each unit, how many calls are running per shift on average? So again, Station 1, ambulance 1's running about 5.2 calls, and the backup ambulance there is running 1.3 calls. Fire call, fire-related calls is 2.5 calls. So you kinda see the totals there as you run down where we're at, and our highest risk and our highest priorities need to be, again, where the bulk of the population is, population densities, anything like that, Station 1. 6, that is a total 0.58 calls, including EMS and fire calls total. So that's where we're kinda at right now. Again, there's your total calls for each station as we break it down. Response times, that's something else, of course, we wanna make sure we measure. This is an average of EMS and fire response time, so we can, again, we can break it down per fires, different things like that, but as a whole, Station 1, we're running 3 minutes and 23 seconds. Stations 2, 3, 5 are all around a good thing. Station 4, you know, it's a little bit higher, there's reasons for that. They're our primary station that actually runs our transfers out of Winter Garden, so that response time all the way out to Winter Garden is something that's also measured, that's why it looks a little skewed there. Station 6 also, that's the only station we run the Quint and the ambulance to, so it's a little skewed. So really, our response times are phenomenal still. We're running 4 minutes and 34 seconds, average citywide. That's great, that's right where we wanna be. Fun fact for the day, busiest day is Wednesdays, who knows why? This is one of those things, but you know, statistics are funny. Busiest time of day is, it makes sense, you know, anywhere from 8:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night, our slowest times are any time after that. So it kinda makes sense, hopefully, most people are sleeping. Common question, we've got asked a lot lately, have our, how's our response times? I'm sorry, our call volume dropped somewhat because of COVID, yes, we did see that trend a little bit, where there was a reduction in call volume. What we did actually notice was a higher number of higher-speed wrecks, things like that, less people in the road, people were driving faster, entrapments, things like that, so this, you know, something interesting, but. Another common question, how are we doing with our personnel? Every year, the NFPA puts out a study based on supporting tables of how we are ranked nationally, different things like that, takes those things into consideration. So this act, this report actually came out in February this year. On average, over the last five years, you can see if, down in the, if you got, wrong Right here, 1.7, or 1.7 firefighters per thousand in population. That's again, a five-year average based on what the NFPA has reported to it. When you look at some of this stuff, and you, this has all kinds of fun statistics and things like that, but our population, obviously, between 50 and 100,000, 52 to 60-hour work week. Basically, to kind of explain that, firefighters who work a 24, 48-hour work week, that's the most, most places in this area. In fact, I think one down south does a 24/72, but was it Boca, I believe? They live different, but primarily, it's a 24/48 hour shift. The way that works is, if you work Sunday, Wednesday, Saturday, that's a long week for you. You get a 72-hour paycheck at the end of the week. The next weeks, Mondays, Thursdays, Tuesdays, Fridays, so you get 48. So based on that, is 168 hours divided by a three-week period, that's an average of a 56-hour work week. So that's where that number comes from, from the 52 to 60-hour pay cycle there. In that average, our population is about 1.39 firefighters per thousand, so that's where the national average is. Kinda comparing to where we're at around our region, Orange County, they have, they're at 1.67 firefighters per thousand. We broke it down into per mile, all kinds of different things, but we'll run through these quickly. Orlando Fire Department, they're 1.82 firefighters per thousand. One firefighter, 553. Acoi, 1.02 per thousand, they're on the, on the lower side. One firefighter, 559 in population. Where we're at, we're at 2.06 firefighters per thousand, so we're doing really good. You know, we have a higher firefighter population than most of the surrounding areas. Maitland, 2.39, we have to look at with a lot of these different stats, and it's also population densities. There are only 6.4 square miles, whereas 30, we're 34, almost 35 square miles now. So when you break down a lot of this different stuff, Winter Park, 2.28 firefighters per thousand. Rio Rancho, funny story, I know the chief there, that's why I put their stat in, but one thing we were talking about when we're, when we're applying for grants, is how they come out and they look at this stuff. We can see his, his fire department, which is out west, there's different demographics and things like that, but they only have 0.94 firefighters per square mile. They have almost double our population with the same number of firefighters. So when you look at things like that, this is what we have to kinda measure ourselves against. So there's everybody kinda broken down, again, rate per citizen, one point, one firefighter for 485 citizens. You can kinda see the breakdowns, it goes down the side there, so. Personnel-wise, we're doing pretty good. Another interesting thing with this, it also breaks down what, how much equipment we should have, where we should be at with that. Average, again, based on our population size, pumpers per thousand, averaging the nation's 4.24 pumpers for a population our side. We have eight pumpers. We have six front runs and two reserves, so we're, again, doing very well in that aspect. Other suppression vehicles include brush trucks, our squad actually has an onboard tank, so we're at, right at four, national average is two. Aerial apparatus, again, we're right, right in line with everything, those are obviously a little more expensive, as you guys learned last year. And then also stations, right now, an average population of our, city of our size, right at 4.2 stations, we have six. So we're doing very well. Believe it or not, we've been doing more than just COVID this year, you know, it might sound funny, but it's, things we've been doing, we updated hearing and eye protection for all our firefighters, we updated our station tones with the night mode. We fixed and updated all our apparatus headsets, we found a lot of them were broken, so that's something we wanna identify and make sure that, that's, everything's kosher with that and we're safe as possible. We updated all our portable radio microphones to the highest fire rated stand, fire-rated standard, sorry. The previous ones we had were actually just normal, run-of-the-mill, public services-type mics. We wanted to make sure that we updated those, because they actually have specific fire ratings, wind muffling, you know, if you're talking through your mask, things like that, so we make sure we upgraded that. Good timing. Increased our command support officers from 1 to 2. Applied for AFG grant for exhaust systems for all stations, we're looking at that heavily. We still haven't heard anything about that, I'm sure it's gonna be a while with Angus and other stuff going on. Fully equipped our civil disturbance gear with necessary lifesaving equipment, obviously, with that sort of thing. We formalized policies and procedures for our peer support team as well. Personnel development-wise, we've established a write-up program, established routine quarterly officer meetings, which again, a lot of this has been delayed, of course, because of COVID-related stuff, we haven't been able to keep that up and running. We do have our weekly staff meetings. We established an officer development program, we actually have a committee of six different officers got together, and would decide how they want to do this. Also established a succession plan with a gap analysis, we wanna make sure that we're filling in some of those gaps with that. Big thing too, with work with city staff, we were able to get paramedic preceptor pay for six of our preceptors, so that's something we're excited about. Again, administrative and fiscal responsibility, we're reporting to NIFRS correctly, again, helps with our grant processes, helps a lot of different data. We established a tool committee before, we got, a lot of guys were buying their own tools and bringing stuff in, we wanted to make sure it's, to be as safe as possible that those tools were approved for use, so that reduces some of our injuries. Actually had a neighboring fire department, that's where a lot of it came from, where actually someone got hurt pretty significantly using a tool that was not fire department purchased or approved, and it caused an issue, so. Asset management, that's a big thing, and depreciation schedule, see coming up in a little bit, we've established that. Reorganized records and disposal processes, updated, reorganized our standard operating guidelines. Developed and implemented an ASHR SOG, which is Active Shooter Hostile Event SOG this year, something we're proud of. Overtime savings is something that we really wanna tackle this year. It's been a rough year, as we know, with COVID and some other things that are related, but total difference this year so far is close to $300,000 that we've saved with overtime, just making a few adjustments. Changed healthcare, as of June of this year, since we've started collecting, December 2019, we've collected 955,000 gross in revenue, well on the way to our projected 1.2 million. Chief Sanchez is actually gonna be presenting a, August 5th is gonna be presenting a more in-depth presentation specifically on that, to get more granular with it and see how we can do some of that stuff. Orange County contract, and a big thing that city staff and the mayor were heavily involved with last year was negotiating that contract, this year's was $497,000 in bonus revenues, things like that. What we're trying to do for next year, again, we're gonna, we really wanna develop a strategic plan, didn't get a chance to do that with the year, this year, because of all the stuff we're dealing with. Internal, external stakeholders involved. Fire department's fee schedule and the comparison studies, where we're at with some of the other stuff. Development of our personnel gap analysis and positions, and looking at training opportunities. One big thing that comes up, you know, we're really good at some of our training with our lieutenant positions, but even engineer and those lower ranks, we need to start working on some of that. We really wanna establish professional standards, disciplinary processes. Biggest thing, you know, a lot of the time, that has a negative connotation, but it's more to change behavior, you know, if we establish some of those parameters and things like that, so. Of course, we always have the ISO and AHA guidelines, we wanna meet, and standard is 90% time to five point, and to get there in 5.5 minutes for our first two units, 9.5 with the rest of them. Again, AHA guidelines, four minutes, we won't try and get there between four and six minutes, again, our average response time is looking really good, so. Updated, you probably saw this last year, but we are still an ISO 1, one of 40 in Florida. Nationwide, there's 348, so it still puts us in the top 0.7% of the country. This is our, still our response, again, there's some annexations in there, and you know, you can get that close by our county contract area in all six stations. Big thing, we worked hard on this year, getting into the budget side of things now, fire department holiday pay. That's one thing we, we really wanted to look at. We identified that we're a little bit off than from the rest of the city, a lot of, in fact, when we looked at the personal personnel rules and regulations, fire department staff was actually excluded, and so we had to change some of that verbiage, some of the language in there, to provide for us to get a small bit of holiday pay for our guys and girls. The current benefit was five hours for each of those holidays worked. What we were able to do with, with the help of Edward and staff, is up that to all 10 holidays, five hours for a total of $39,000. So that's something that we're able to do. So getting into 2110 now, the Fire Chiefs' office, biggest thing with this, you're gonna see, no significant changes, we just made some, again, consolidation and streamlining, help track trends and ease the purchasing processes. A lot of this was with our, we had, in two or three different divisions, we had the same kind of lines. To me, it was easier to put it all into one line, so you're gonna see some of that movement here, so. 3100, there's nothing there. This is the depreciation schedules, talking about it, put this at the beginning of each division. We wanna take and quantify why we're having to replace what we're having to replace. If you look at this, you know, it's a, a straight-line depreciation, based on the CAFERS, you know, we can establish how long we think each vehicle life's gonna take. So 15 years useful life, this is all our admin, excuse me, our chief officer vehicles and our golf carts and things like that, we did 15-year on that, but we're, we're plenty good, right there, as you can see. In fact, the two that are gonna drop off the next couple of years are more reserved anyway, so we'll probably be more than fine. The 4,000 line, the travel per diem, we moved all that from 2130, so we, again, we wanted to kinda make it all in one line, to make it easier to track. These are our ESO EMS seminars, which two or three of our chief officers attend, it's again, updates, we're getting, ESO is getting bigger and bigger, we're getting a lot more involved with that, so. Also, the quarterly meeting, which is Department of Health holds quarterly, that's the travel per diem for that. And the CACO and CAPO is, again, part of our new billing process, we have to have a ambulance, a compliance officer, an ambulance privacy officer for HIPAA reasons, obviously, Chief Sanchez, that's something he's gonna go to and make sure that we're in. 4100, there was nothing, 42, again, just moving everything into one division to make it a little bit easier, so that's why you see those changes there. 4300, I jumped over that real quick, just because that's just our utility bills for all six stations, nothing's changed that way, so it's pretty much the same. The 4400, again, temporary housing for Station 6 and our copier lease, our copier lease is actually up in November. I know Rob and IT has been working on that, but ours is about 6,000 a year for all our printing copies. Temporary housing, William Scotsman came to us this year when we first started doing this budget process, and we actually wanted to increase it by substantially more than what you see here, about 25%. We came back and said, that's not gonna work, and renegotiated it down to, basically, if we do a one-year deal, it's gonna be 21,735 for the year. If we do a two-year, that's a 15% increase. If you do a two-year deal, that drops down to 20,0790, so it just depends on what direction you guys would like to go in, that's just our options for temporary housing. Again, office supplies, which is, let me think here, 45, there's nothing under there. 4600, repairing maintenance to our admin office is about 1,500, it's about what we do each year, and small changes here and there. The 4650, again, nothing's changed as far as staff vehicles and vehicle maintenance. Letterhead stationary envelopes, that's 4,700, printing services, still 300. And then, again, we moved all the general office supplies into the Fire Chiefs' office division, just to keep track of that, so that's why you'll see that increase in there. Fire station supplies, again, around 20,000, that's again, our truck wash, restroom supplies, household cleaning, all the disinfectant and stuff like that. Fuel that has not changed in the Fire Chiefs' office, Eaters has the public publications or subscriptions, $3,000, that's for our annual NFPA subscription, which is required by ISO and also some of our professional associations. Training has not changed, and 6,300 has not changed, 6,400. So we are requesting a few additional things in the Fire Chiefs' office. One of the big things we were looking at this year, mental health, that's something that's definitely growing in our industry. What we've found is this company, basically, that allows us to establish a baseline mental health assessment, that's something we've never had in our department before, is pre-screening and things like that, you know, pre-hiring screening, things like that. Treatment also, if it's traumatized during a work-related incident, specific treatments for events like mass shooting, terrorist attacks, and there's also infectious disease benefit, and we can actually get all of this for about $975, $972 a month for the whole department, so 12,000 a year for the department. So it's something, you know, we're, we're interested in pursuing. One of the big things, replacing beds and mattresses, we've, you know, kinda gone out and looked this year of a lot of our stations, some of them are just, the box springs are just slap or out. The monk beds that are actually purchased at Station 1 are not big enough to hold a lot of our firefighters, they're actually, we're, there's no way Commissioner Becker would fit in any one of those.
I don't fit on my own bed, so.
So, you know, we kinda got together with staff and we came up with an idea that we can actually build these solid frames for long-term use and not, we can get away from, it's just very similar to what we have at Station 5 now. So by building these for 15,000, we can actually do our entire depart, our entire department and replace the foam mattresses, I'm sorry, the mattresses with foam mattresses and the protection for that as well, so. Again, it's a long-term solution for definitely a significant issue, you know, sleep is important, so that's about 15,000. Also, new flooring, Station 1 upstairs, you can imagine the 42 personnel assigned there, it gets its fair share of wear and tear. We also wanna make sure it's more sanitary, you know, with this whole COVID thing this year, so something we're looking at is the, you know, vinyl or laminate type flooring that's out there. Cost estimate with installing everything is about $8,000. Training class for each of fire admin, you know, we're trying to make sure that we stay up with the, with what's the latest and greatest, requesting $300 for the five of us in there, which would be $1,500. Any questions on 2110?
Any questions? Okay.
I'd just like to say, first of all, thank you, this is the most comprehensive data that we've ever received from the fire department, so I'm not sure who to thank for all the statistical homework that's done, catching up those things that were missed.
He's, he's data-driven, man, I'm telling you.
I'm a dork.
He really has a great ability to project and move forward. Just a couple of questions, there's a few numbers like here, for replacement of mattresses, here it says 17,000, I said 15.
Yes. We, when we first turned in our budgets, you know, the ones you are seeing here, I'm sorry, I should've explained that, were the original, we actually found some cost savings in certain places, so you'll see, some of these numbers aren't exactly what you have.
You had 2,000 actually of savings from what we have.
We previously looked at, we looked at some other options and things like that, so.
And the only other question I had is on fuel usage, hasn't increased, but we see the numbers of calls increasing each year, is it because we've just estimated enough to know that that's a safe buffer, or?
Yeah, and that's actually something normally done outside of our, it's established, you know, through, at, you know, city staff and things like that, so.
I just wanna make sure we're not underestimating, which I know, you don't tend to do, you're conservative in a good way, so, you know, I just wanna make sure, something like that, that seems to be going up in our usage, that we make sure and estimate high enough, so we're comfortable there in the number.
Commissioner, we'll be monitoring those too, because our fleet department gives us, keeps track of the fuel pricing, and then, and as you know, these, like you've seen already, these numbers are forever-changing. Tomorrow, some of these numbers will be a little different in some places, because we're looking for everything we can, especially in this budget year, everything we can everywhere, so yeah, they'll be, we'll monitor those.
Commissioner Smith, any questions?
My only question was, or concern was, as our population continues to grow and the calls increase, is that going to be accounted for in this budget?
Absolutely, you know, any, that's the whole, that's, that's, I like what you're saying, I like what you're saying. That's the whole, the risk statement, you know, that's, that's a big part, we had, that's not, it's not just a one-time shot, it's a continual assessment of where we're at, where our highest risk are, how many, how many call volume, you know, where our call volumes at, things like that, and it's gonna be a continual assessment to make sure. I think right now, with the, with our, we're actually seeing slightly lower numbers this year than last year, you know, partly COVID-related and things like that, but we're right in, right in line where we were last year, so I'm comfortable saying that, yeah, we'll be good.
Okay.
We got some more to go through, but.
So on your PowerPoint presentation, you said these were trending, you said we've gotten 155,000 from December, from summer through June, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you look at that and extrapolate that out of the full year, you could analyze roughly 1.6 million trend goals.
Yeah.
Is that, is that revenue considered in the budget? Or are you factoring 1.2 to set 2020 budget?
No.
Yes.
Commissioner, wow, you are right on the number. So if you look in the actual, on Wednesday, the actual, the packet on Wednesday has your revenues and your expenditures for the general fund, and that projection is 1.6 million. So we're basing, based on these numbers that we've seen, we're, hope we're projecting 1.6 for next, for 2021.
Right.
And we're definitely gonna.
Make sure that, you know, we're factoring that in, not 1.2.
Sure. I'm sorry, yeah, the 1.2 was what we projected for last year.
Current, right.
Right.
Understood. And then, two, on the temporary housing one, I mean, so it sounds like there's a benefit to us if you sign long-term agreements. Unless we're considering not keeping Station 6, why would we not enter into a long-term to get us the most favorable deal, and then just build in language to say, whenever a brick and mortar location is built, we can exit the contract if we want to?
Certainly, that's, you know, that's something that we discuss with staff, you know, as long-term as we can get. You know, projecting where, we really wanna start, Station 6, obviously, as soon as we can, the permanent location, things like that, and really, William Scotsman, this is, as far as I was there willing to go, was two years.
Okay. And then maybe, I'll table it till we're done with the entire budget, I noticed that your, the salary and wages for this particular fund is 20% lower, the net-net of all three funds is relatively flat down, actually, a couple of percentage, so I don't know if we'll talk about it at the end of this, but just generally speaking, what are we looking at in terms of merit increase for employees, that sort of stuff? So I'll table that. And then just kinda set the table for me personally, as you're going through the final two.
Sure.
You know, what I'm most interested in is making sure, like, my personal amount of negotiables, right, are training, making sure that we're adequate, we're trained, retaining certifications, so put that lens on.
On whatever you're presenting, accreditation, you know, obviously, for us to retain our ISO 1 rating, staffing, you know, as you go through your presentation, that, whatever staffing that you're proposing for next budget is, keeps in mind our contractual commitments or agreements like that. or agreements like the Orange County coverage and all that sort of stuff, OSHA requirements. You're more expert than I am, obviously. And then equipment, you know, just making sure that we have proper equipment for everybody that's doing the job, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. So moving into suppression, twenty-one-twenty. The, again, this is our look at our capital assets for suppression. You know, some, some red numbers on the side now, something we, again, we projected out. Last year, the, kind of moving from bottom to top, but our, our brush trucks, brush one, brush two, and brush four. This year, we're actually able to replace the pump on that vehicle, which extended, extends its life. These trucks are a little bit older. Yes, they're ninety, I think ninety-three's or ninety-eight's, ninety-two and ninety-five. But these trucks have like almost five hundred miles, maybe. They've been very little use as far as driven on the road because they are brush trucks. So that's why we went ahead and just replaced just the pumps on them. Again, it's going to be part of our three-year cycle. You'll see, we're replacing the next two pumps over the next two years and we'll be good to go on those. The engine eleven is a, is a reserve unit. So replacement needed, yes. Again, where, I think we're going to be able to, you'll see, project out and replace a fire truck next year, which is going to take care of those top two. We need to start thinking about engine four. It's our, our last American or Francis and as a front-run unit out at Station Four. But that's, again, something we'll assess. So you can kind of see where we're looking at and quantifying where we need to be and why we need to be there. Thirty-one hundred, there's nothing under there. Thirty-four hundred, contractual services. Travel per diem. National Fire Academy, again, with the crazy year we've had, was actually, everything was canceled this year. But this is a, an awesome opportunity for up-and-coming firefighters, officers, any kind of class you want to take up there, investigator, inspector classes. Nice thing about it, when, if you get approved, your classes are free, the airfare's free. One thing we want to reimburse is the meal ticket. And usually, we, based on the number of personnel we sent in the past, about two thousand, we'll cover the meal ticket for that. So that's why that's in travel per diem. Forty-one hundred, there's nothing under communication. Forty-two hundred, again, that line got moved into fire chief's office. Rentals and leases got moved. Forty-five hundred, there's nothing under there. So forty-six hundred, again, repair and maintenance of buildings and equipment. This is kind of what you were just mentioning, Commissioner. Our fire extinguisher recertifications, our bunker gear repairs, our existing bunker gear repairs, station appliance, training center repairs, unexpected things that come up, air compressor servicing, small engine repairs, SEBA, tower trucks and ladder researches. We actually had to increase that a little this year because now we have two aerials. You know, we had to quit for one year and now we added extra towers. So that went up a little bit. That covers all our ground layers as well. And then SEBA repairs and maintenance, we had to increase that line a little bit. We have, we'll get to that when we get to our SEBAs more specifically. But we, we are, in our last three years of a four-year cycle, that those are approved to be used still. So we, again, started last year kind of replacing them slowly as we're going along to make sure that we, we don't spend it all in one year, if that makes sense. So, but that's why that, repair and maintenance for those, because a lot of them are out of warranty right now. Forty-six fifty, vehicle maintenance, again, hundred thousand dollars. Again, fire trucks, you can imagine are pretty expensive to fix. Luckily, most of the years, we don't have to tap into this, but there has been a few years where if one motor goes or a fire pump or something like that, we do tap into that. Restriping the backup units, you know, some of our older units are getting, as you can see from the pictures, a little wear and tear in the striping. So it's something we wanted to put in. We actually pu, pushed this off till this year was in the budget last year, but we rolled it forward. Just kind of making sure that we're complying with that. Forty-seven hundred, printing services, there's nothing. Forty-eight fifty, I think one, obviously one of the most important things we do is public relations programs, anything from fire safety programs, PR. Lieutenant Mayor does a phenomenal job at getting out and doing this, his work. We can't, in my opinion, you can't put a price on that. You know, how many lives did we save by going out and talking to you, some of those things? PIO equipment, he's really looking at getting some public service announcement videos and not much has really changed there. The October breast cancer shirts are actually something that they, we wanted to budget. It's for the public. These are, you'll see, our uniform shirts are in a different line, but this is actually for sale for the public. We just wanted to budget it instead of having to move things around like we had the past few years. But a lot of times, it goes through us and working with PD, so. Nothing in forty-nine oh-three. Fifty-two hundred, again, general operating, so, you know, where a lot of our stuff comes from. There's our work uniforms, our polo shirts, our breast cancer shirts, replacement as needed, bunker boots, volunteer and explorer program uniforms, we like to make sure they look good, too. Firefighting PPE, hand tools, batteries, tech rescue equipment, things like high-angle rescue ropes and different stuff, a lot of that, you know, comes, just like anything else, there's a timestamp on it, and a lot of times, every year, we have to replace some of that stuff. Hazmat tools and test kits, firefighting foam, we are, all of, but one of our trucks are now calf cap, calves capable. So we see some increases in that. Hoses and nozzles, a big thing this year, one of the kind, that's why I have it up here, is a Seaburn SEBA canisters. That's something, we were going through the whole COVID thing, we were looking at alternate measures in case we ran out of masks. You know, we had a real, we had to put our heads together and come up with some solutions. And, you know, city staff has helped immensely with trying to get us and getting what we needed to get, applying for different things. But the Seaburn is pretty neat, actually can be used for brush fires. It hooks directly into our existing mask instead of actually clicking in like you would in normal from your air tank. It's a, just a filter system that goes on there. Nice thing, again, for us this year is added benefit could be used for COVID-type calls. So it adds that capability if we run into something like that in the future, again, it's a, and the lifespan is about ten years on one of these. So you might not use it, but we have it in reserve if needed, so. And again, significantly increases firefighter safety. Also, big thing we'd use them for is overhaul. They're finding a lot of cancer-related things to working after the fire's out and cleaning up and messing things like that. Trench rescue equipment and then our SEBA mask fit test, you know, that's a center, our actual kit away to get recertified. Fuel, again, fuel and gasoline is something that's set. The fifty-four hundred, which is books, publication, subscriptions. So we do our normal, you'll see in there, three thousand for promotional testing and our training instructor textbooks. That's an ISO requirement every day they update, what books we need. So we need to make sure that we improve that and update those. One thing I'm excited about this year, the National Testing Network, it's firefighter recruit, pre, pre-hire testing program. Basically, it's a, a national network that's out there. It started in law enforcement, has tricked it over to the fireside, where we pay an annual subscription, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And anyone who's in Central Florida can actually go test whenever they're certified. So if they're certified EMT or firefighter, they go to these testing centers and they pretty much do all the work for us. They rate them, they grade, they take a written test, physical, chili, things like that. And anytime we would offer a job opening, they can actually pay twenty-five dollars and they send, it sends all their information directly to us. So now we can create our pool list without having to be involved with the testing process. Nice thing about this, most other municipalities around here use it. Winter Garden, the Coe's, all those, you know, we've found that that's kind of where we got the idea from. So it's something we're pretty excited about and I think it gives it a very objective view of some of our candidates that are out there. Fifty-five hundred, we have props, props in there, two thousand dollars that we are going to use to update some of our training props down at Training Center. There's a few more things in the request down the road. But, nothing in building. Sixty-four hundred, again, is that our second year of our three-year phase-in program, including the pump and the decking for our brush trucks. We are in the second year of a continual program. Basically, what we're trying to do is buy twenty-two sets of firefighting gear every year. We continue to do this on the same cycle. After, I believe, three, four more years, we will have, everyone has a second set of bunker gear, which is now becoming the industry standard. So it's kind of a way to get it, little bits and pieces at a time while maintaining that. And that's going to be, it increased a little bit this year to fifty-three thousand. This is only for the pants and coats. And then we're actually, the SEBA replacement program we also talked about, where we have fifty-eight SEBAs that are out of warranty in the last phase of acceptable NFPA code requirement. This is year two of the four-year phase-in program. So we're trying to buy fifteen this year, again, for a hundred and six, five thousand dollars. And that's going to, again, over the next two years, we'll have all of them replaced at that point. Suppression, some of the requests that we have, something that's become a new standard this year, two thousand and twenty standard NFPA recommended bunker gear liner testing. This is, six thousand dollars would be for all of our gear that gets sent away. What they're finding now is, because of the requirements of how much we have to clean our gear now, with the washing machines, basically, what they are at the, at the, at the fire station, Station One and Station Five, they're actually finding that the liners are actually becoming a little worn down quicker than it has in the past. So NFPA came out and said we need to establish a standard and make sure that this gets tested. So that's something, again, it's a recommendation at this point. It's not, so we're looking to do that. Lieutenant Mayor requested this. He would like a truck wrap for his PEO or PIO vehicle. Yes, it is a little funny dog in the back that we would love to make sure that he has that. Two thousand dollars for a vehicle wrap. Hurst hydraulic extrication tool set, something, again, request, we are good now, but it's always, always good to have redundancy. And anytime one of these units goes out of service, something to replace it with. So full set for the cutter, spreaders, and ram would be thirty-four thousand. Training aspect, this, this new type of, is something pretty neat. It's called Lion Attack Digital Training System. As you can see, it's a fog machine on steroids, pretty much. The picture in the center shows what it looks like in the environment. It actually replicates all types of fires, A, Class A fires, Class B fires, Class C fires, and it's, and Class D fires, which is metals. It's smart enough to know how much water it, you actually have to put on, depending on what size fire you make it. Or, in other words, if you don't hit it in the right spot and you don't put enough water on the fire, it won't go out. So it trains us to kind of, you know, exactly real world what it does. And again, the fog machine is, is a pretty, pretty spectacular. We actually saw this when we had the group out for one of our training seminars over the last couple of years. But nineteen thousand dollars is what that unit cost. Again, fire-related training courses and classes, something we would like to do for all of our firefighters. In the past, we had a limited amount and we had to pick and choose sometimes, you know, based on different amounts. What I would like to establish is you get three hundred dollars a year per person. You have a certain amount of time to use it in. If you don't use it, let's say by June, then, then it can come to application process again. But if we establish three hundred dollars per firefighter, it would be thirty thousand, six hundred dollars for all of our firefighters to attend a fire-related course, be it fire officer, fire inspector, rope, something like that, at least something towards that. Any questions on twenty-one-twenty?
Just a couple. First of all, the CBRN canister rated, is that the same for smoke usage versus a COVID usage? In other words, is there the same ten-year longevity?
Yeah.
If it's specific, so either way, it still gives that.
Yeah. Yeah, no, there's certain, you know, obviously, if you use it more, it'll, the ten years is, is like shelf life, I guess, is the right way of saying it. So if you use it over a certain, certain number of times, then yes, we would have to replace that.
So, but would being in a, just merely a COVID environment, give it longer usage than being in a smoking?
Oh, yes. I see what you're saying. Yes, sir. Yeah, just because, you know, the, with the type of particulate you're dealing with or, you know, something like that.
The fact that you can use it for COVID doesn't shorten the life, it actually lengthens it if it's, you know, versus only smoke.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay. Love the staggered purchasing program. That's been the strategy I know we've advocated for, and that puts us on just a much more even keel. So thank you for doing that. The laundering requirements for the liners, will that reduce the lifetime usage of, because if you're having a longer war?
That's.
We have to be replacing those more often.
Right. That's what we're, we're seeing, because it's a newer standard, so we're not yet seeing that effect. But I, I definitely see that trend happening, if that makes sense. You know, I think eventually they're going to reduce that down to, and replace it every eight years versus every ten years, just because of wear and tear. But I think that's why they established this standard, to kind of see, so that at least we can show and see what our liners are doing throughout this process.
Based on that, you're already projecting correctly with a shorter lifespan. Also.
No, I'm sorry. Right now, we're projecting, just to be clear, for our current number of firefighters. If our number of firefighters goes up or we see a change in that, then we will have to make some adjustments down the line.
Okay.
But if that's a hundred and ten.
And line fourteen hundred for overtime, it's significantly lower than the twenty-nineteen actual. Again, just looking at conservating estimates, why such a big difference on that? And does that still give us enough estimate to, that we're comfortable with that? Versus like in twenty-nineteen, it's two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one seventy-five?
Oh.
And the budget for twenty-twenty, twenty-one, seventy-five thousand?
Yes. So most, what we try and look at with overtime, and last year's numbers, I think, were because we had a, we had a unit, Amos fifty-one, that was in service. Basically, it was costing us overtime to operate normally. And that's why I remember when I first came in, we did the presentation and we wanted to see where our risks were in our adjustments. And Amos, Amos fifty-one still are running point-two calls a shift. So by taking that, those personnel and putting them at Station One, one, we were able to add a person here. We were able to reduce, or actually increase our number of people that were allowed off. So we went from four people off to allowing five people off without causing overtime. So that significantly has dropped our overtime numbers from last year to this year. I really, you know, what we, what we have projected is off for one person in each division per day is what, was what is projected. And that's really where we should be. You know, right now, it allows for five people off. If that sixth person goes off, it's, now, this year has been COVID crazy, to put it, you know, lightly. But we've seen, most of our increase in overtime has been over this last two months because of what we've been dealing with. Throughout the rest of the year, we were, we were trying to keep online with those numbers.
Well, again, I commend you for good analysis and re, you know, re, changing the schedule there, basically, to, to make sure that, that's a great savings. So thank you for your diligence. That's all.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I guess I've noticed that there's a thirteen percent decrease in salaries. How do you account for that?
Well, a lot of, so, there's different things you can look at. And we're looking at twenty-one-twenty specifically?
Yes.
Okay. So a lot of times, if, you know, we have, you know, different promotions, things like that, or new hires come in, you know, you're going to see different trends with that. We have, you know, employees here a little bit less, if that makes sense. Also, some of them actually gone either to admin side or some of them become paramedics. So you're going to see, there's, it might be a slight increase in twenty-one-thirty because now we have someone being paid out of that line, if that makes.
Okay.
Is that good?
Good. Commissioner Beck, good?
Okay. All right. Last but not least, EMS. Again, our capital asset or depreciation schedule, excuse me, what we're looking at, staff has been really diligent in working with us to make sure that we're able to purchase an ambulance, one ambulance every year. This is our, obviously, our bread and butter. You can see by the numbers, the number of calls. We run, we're EMS-based, with a fire on the side, as they, as they say. We run the wheels off these trucks, literally, you know, based on, on different things like that. So this year, we're actually in the process, right now, currently, of replacing the one at the bottom, which is ambulance thirty, forty-one, as I can read across. By replacing that, we're actually, it's a trickle effect. Again, every year, we're just going to start replacing an ambulance. It's just the best trend to do, based on some of the stuff. We might find some savings down the road. We can skip a year or two, based on, you know, if, again, six, eventually we see a call volume there, we need to buy an ambulance six or things like that. But trending very well and able to replace that in a, in a reasonable fashion. And a lot of these, too, when you see them become reserve units, like ambulance twelve and thirteen are the backups to the backups. So they're, you know, we're, we're in really good shape with where we're at. Thirty-four hundred is our contractual services. You can see some differences on your papers here as well. Basically, the sterile cycle stayed the same. That's our, our blood-borne pathogens. They give us training every year. That's where we put our shock boxes. It's the program we have where they can come, pick up a red box and need to, if they need to replace it, they can do that. Also, our hazcom, our hazardous communications training as well. What you probably have on there is a seven, was it seventy thousand? There's a couple of different items there for warranties, for monitors, cots, power loads, and Lucas devices. Codestat is the software. That's something we have to have to communicate. Our monitors actually communicate to ESO and also to our hospitals. When you do a twelve lead, actually, going around, sends it right to the hospital. So that's something that's in there. That's the twenty-two fifty, the difference. We were able to work out with Stryker. We were able to work out with Stryker, originally, they came back and said, we wanted to, to sign long-term warranties for a substantial amount, as you can see. We were able to come back and actually negotiate, breaking it out a little bit over the years. And this is obviously something we have to have as far as warranty goes. But we were able to break it down to one year for thirteen of our monitors, one year for six year, six of our cots, six of our power loads, and eight, eight total Lucas devices, which are CPR equipment. We can actually keep this price of, it's twenty five thousand, three forty for this year and next year. And then we'll have to go back and renegotiate for that amount. And again, these are warranties to keep those in service. So the bottom line is, instead of the substantial amount that you see before, which was proposed, we were able to knock that down to twenty five thousand dollars a year for the warranty. And, oh, that's, forgot to hit the button, but that's what that is right there. Four thousand, again, has moved to twenty one hundred, forty one hundred, nothing under there, forty two hundred, nothing under there. Forty four hundred's rental and leases, again, these are for our main O two bottles. When we talk about a main, we talk about the big bottles that store, we actually rent those. And those are at, located at station one and five, our cascade systems, they're there. Use, use for refilling our own, owned portable, the little portable bottles we have. So that also covers all of our oxygen for the year, so that's just something that's, we have there. Forty five hundred, nothing under there, forty six hundred, repair and maintenance, building equipment. Again, this is things that are not covered, stair chairs, suction units, oxygen, the hydro replacements, things like that. So this is a, basically our repair and maintenance for EMS, that's about twenty five thousand. And this is, forty six fifty, vehicle maintenance, again, we're just looking at, you know, our trends and things like that. Thirty eight thousand, five hundred eighty sevens, what we expect for ambulance repairs. Again, it's one of those things that you don't know, we lost a turbo last year in one of them and it, you know, we had to spend all that money. But that's something that's about the same. Forty nine fifty, again, this is EMS billing, it's eighty four thousand, it's a service charge of five point five percent. Again, projected revenues, this can, you know, about eighty percent of our process claims. Definitely increases our collection opportunities, provides a lot of regulatory compliance. We've had some great experience with them so far, actually came out and did a narrative, how to write a correct narrative for our EMS, our EMS reports. And we found that, you know, by writing them correctly, we're seeing a lot more of our collections go up because of, you know, how things, they want to process. So very good, very good so far with that. This also includes now health data exchange, before it didn't, which is basically information system that we share with hospitals and you can get, share that information. So that wasn't included last year, we've knocked it down to where it's actually included this year. The fifty one hundred got moved again, and then fifty two hundred, of course, you know, this is our bread and butter, it's what we do. We have six stations, we provide basic and advanced life support, we are a transporting agency, as we all know. We have ten ALS licensed transport ambulances, two reserve ambulances, twelve non-licensed transport units, in other words, fire trucks, squads, things like that. We do cover sixty seven square mileage with our Orange County contract. We're projecting this year to have seventy eight paramedics and twenty nine EMTs. So again, this is our, all of our stuff, we have to purchase for our EMS operating supplies. About two hundred fifteen. Fuel, again, something that's projected, fifty four hundred, books, publication subscriptions. Hand heavy dosage calculation, digital access. Hand heavy is a doctor from down, Dr. Hand heavy's from down south, he established a pediatric dosage calculation program. Phenomenal, this is the way he explains things, breaks it down, and is usually actually uses a hand, you'll see here in a minute. But the nice thing about having digital access, as, as y'all can imagine, responding to any kind of pediatric emergency can be very taxing. Having to think through things, making sure your doses are correct. And it's actually more critical on a smaller patient, the smaller weights you get, you may actually may, may have to be very precise on your medication. So this fifteen hundred dollars will give us access to having that literally at your fingertips, to be able to figure out some of those dosage calc. And then ABC Quick Guide, which I think is on there, is a reference for billing and coding, which is a requirement for billing and coding. Fifty five hundred, again, training, annual CEU is required, ACLS and BLS, hand heavy pediatric instructor course. What we're actually gonna be able to do is do a train to trainer, we're gonna train, six of our core people are gonna come back and train everybody else in how to implement this hand heavy. You can kind of see the picture over there to the right, it really breaks down things pretty simply. Also, the narrative CMS training, so there's two different types of training. Narrative training is great because you can write to how you want to, a billing company to look at it. And you can also write how you need to document as far as legal aspects. So it's kind of two different types of narrative training there, but that's something that's gonna be provided as well. This, again, is carried over from this year, we've had, because of COVID, we've had to cancel a lot of training classes and move some of that stuff around, so. Ambulance compliance, C officer certification and HIPAA compliance certifications as well, were rolled over from this year. We were able to, just so you guys are aware, basic life support and advanced cardiac life support, we were able to do in-house this year and via internet. So we were able to accomplish those and make sure that we're staying, that's enough of that. But that's twenty eight thousand for EMS training. Something else we actually had to push off this year, upgrading our shoreline power to stations three and four, newer type ambulances. You can see in the upper left where our old style, the newer style, or the bottom right, those are just how we have to charge our AC units. The bigger, you know, the trucks are getting more requirements and things like that. We actually had that in the budget, we had to roll it forward because even getting electrician out through this crazy time spent, we had to postpone that. So that's five thousand dollars. Something else you'll see on there, EMS supply storage, twelve thousand dollars is something, especially with this year, what we found and what, what we've been good at in the past is kind of, not living paycheck to paycheck, but based on our usage and things like that, we've, we've been able to purchase EMS supplies and store them, you know, and by the time we use them, then we get them replaced. Well, I was, we all have heard in the media and everything that happened this year, that's not always guaranteed. So something we're really looking at doing is finding someplace where we can build storage, has to be, you know, ventilation controlled. We even got with the, looked at all kinds of different avenues to accomplish this. We got with our new clinic to see if there was room over there even, if we can store some of our EMS supplies over there. Currently, everything we have is at our training center, because of the COVID related stuff, we had to buy almost our entire year's worth of supplies and keep them in one spot, just to make sure that we have them. So we're really looking for that type of situation, a warehouse. We got with Ford Hospital, I'm sorry, Advent Health to even establish something there locally. And it's just, you know, everything we're trying to do seems to be not working. So it's just something we're looking at for the future. And that's the, something we're looking at, that's, you know, similar, just the picture, what we're looking at. Sixty four hundred, again, is our replacement ambulance, we're gonna be replacing seventeen year old ambulance, ambulance twelve. Three hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars is the total. A hundred and eighty five for the ambulance, everything else that comes with it, you can see it's broken down there for you. Firecom headsets, power load system, which is our stretchers that go in, it's battery operated and lowers. Lucas chest compression systems, that's our CPR system, life pack monitor to go with it, ambulance graphics and now ambulance mounting system. This actually provides, place some of the changes that come about and it allows us to mount our monitors in a safe location. The only time if there's an accident or something like that, that's a, if you ever, I've never picked up a life packet, it's extremely heavy. And, you know, something, an accident or something can happen, either fall on the patient or, you know, one of us. So something else that we're looking at replacing there. This, I believe, is on yours, but we actually found, we're able to get this through grant process. Violent defense, you've probably heard that term out there recently, some healthcare grade UVC sanitation lights. They use in these, in the food industry, from everything that's out there. For twenty one thousand, we're gonna be able to actually put one of these in, in all twelve of our ambulances. It's kind of a new thing we're seeing with this COVID related stuff. And it's pretty much a, for lack of better words, but like fireworks going off in an ambulance, they set it for a certain amount of time, it blinks, all that stuff. And they found a lot of this research actually helps sanitize. Followed, of course, by normal routine cleaning and also spraying it down with the normal stuff we spray. But something that we're actually able to take care of because of grants, so. Leads me to the last thing. Something looking, we were talking about with our processes and, and development of our people and things like that. One of our goals, we were able to accomplish this year, we're kind of pushed down some of our rank structure. You know, we have, now we have three division chiefs, division, the deputy chief is dissolved, pretty much, and now we have that district chief's position. Something that, talking with some other chiefs in the area, specifically Mount, Mount Doors, have developed a really good rapport with him. Talking to other things, how do we get the most bang for our buck with some of these positions? So currently, we have three district chiefs, A, B and C shift, one per shift. And what we're trying to go to is just an additional district chief. So how's this gonna work? For one additional district chief, again, we're gonna have a total of four. These, most shift personnel can work, typically work a twenty four, forty eight hour shift. What we're proposing is the district chiefs would actually work a twenty four, seventy two hour shift. But each Monday through Thursday, following their twenty four hour shift, they would do a ten hour shift in admin. Okay, so if you can kind of see, following that, that calendar there, start on the sixth, whoever orange is, would work a twenty four hour shift that day and work a ten hour shift in administration the next day. This does a bunch of different things for us. Again, responsibilities, district one typically is what he's assigned to now, operational role. Day-to-day operations, roster lineup, time trades, PTOs, responds to all major incidents within the city. He's considered the incident commander, works with fleet maintenance, all the PM, things like that, highest ranking personnel on the shift. The next day, or when they step into that district two role, it's more of an administrative role. Big thing we're wanting to see, especially with this, this increase in the billing company and, you know, how we want to do things, is QAing reports. So that person would sit, QA reports, prior shift follow-up, so if something started on his shift, you know, a lot of times, it, it's, it sounds funny, but as soon as your shift ends, you don't, you don't have time to deal with it until forty eight hours later, because you just have to, you know, wait until your shift comes back. So having that follow-up routinely after investigations, things like that. Respond and support or an alternate for district one emergency calls. This is also doubling now our chief officer positions on a day-to-day basis, Monday through Thursday. They can help payroll, and again, assist admin staff with projects and special duties. Again, what this benefits, how's it benefits us, is increases our span control during this high peak times. Talked about that earlier, our high peak times are eight o'clock in the morning until, you know, you know, seven o'clock in, in the evening. Those are our high peak times, we can have an additional personnel. Provides another chief officer again during another high call. Evenings, weekends, basically our command support, those are our additional officers that respond from the house. Rotation of district chiefs amongst shifts. A constant approach to policies and procedures, so, you know, I think it's just a natural thing. When you have A shift versus B shift versus C shift, you find that just naturally, they kind of come up with their own rules and regulations. And it causes a pretty inconsistent thing sometimes, you know, when it comes to some of this. But by allowing those, those districts to rotate, you're no longer assigned to A shift, you know, you'd rotate as you go out, your thing, they're, provide a consistent approach. And can increase level affecting this, the quality assurance in the EMS building, you know, we'll make sure that we're QAing our reports and making sure. Opportunity for advancement, one of the last, it was more than ten years ago, was our last district chief promotional. This provides, you know, promotional opportunity for a lot of people that have been waiting for that. Development of future administrative officers, you know, that's one thing, again, the fire service as a whole, it's hard to develop people and get them going the right door. Well, if we have now four officers who are exposed on a weekly basis to administrative policies and procedures and things we deal with in the office, it's just gonna create a, an easier transition for that person once they reach that, that role. Again, accomplishes a lot with only one additional person, so it's just something, again, we're looking for. Station six, you know, this, again, we, you know, something unfortunately, we lost the funding this year with the appropriations. We're looking, and, you know, we've been speaking with the staff and looking for this year, mainly for where we might want to put it. We've been definitely been doing some response times, more dork stuff, but looking at, at response time rings, how quickly we get to things, you know, where we want to put it, you know, permanently, and then working towards getting some of that stuff. There's some different options, but I don't, I don't want to speak on that. But it's definitely still something on the horizon, it's just gonna be tough this year. Thank you for your time, sorry for the long PowerPoint.
That's good. All right, any?
Yeah, again, love the district chief plan. That seems so clear that each one in rotating is gonna be much more up on all of the policies and make it consistent, so that's great. A couple of questions, the violet sanitation lights, do they merely detect things or do they also help sanitize?
Helps sanitize, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a, yeah.
And that was twenty one thousand covered all the different units?
Yes, sir.
That's great. And another question is probably for Ed and just my own question, it's a minor thing, but on line fifty four hundred, under supplies and other services, just, there's a, like a thousand fifty dollar difference, it's not big, but it says a zero percent percentage change, is that just something that was just missed in?
Yeah, that's just a, yeah, calculation probably that needs to be checked.
Okay.
Before we do the final, you'll get, all of those will be, be reviewed.
So even though it says zero percent, it doesn't affect, the four point two is still accurate?
Correct, the overall.
That's all.
Mr. Smith?
I'm good.
Good, Mr. Becker?
Well, I mean, technically speaking, the, the district chief role is on your wish list, right? Is that included in, in the budget or that's on your wish list item?
Wish list.
And then, I don't know if this is the right time to ask too, so generally speaking, what does that look like from a merit increase perspective, merit pool? Did you all take just kind of a, a staff-wide approach or is it differ for police, fire or anything else?
Staff-wide approach, staff-wide approach. And that, I will tell you, we're still working on that, trying to finalize everything and hopefully by, on Wednesday, when you have the full picture, right now, you're just gonna have each department, go through each department, but on Wednesday, when you have the full picture, we'll be able to, to look at the whole thing, which you can see now, you have it in your packet, but a snapshot of everything. So I figure what we do is get through all the departments first and then we'll, we'll go with the big, the overall.
Okay. And then how I kind of open things up, I mean, from a training accreditation, staffing, equipment standpoint, what you presented today, do you see any risks, concerns, anything where we would not be sufficiently staffed or prepared to meet all those requirements?
No, it's, it's a, it's a double-edged, you're never gonna, never gonna hear a fire chief say he doesn't need more. But, but, you know, and
Fair, yeah.
Are we able to operate, absolutely, are we providing the best service possible, absolutely. You know, everything, training wise, the biggest thing, you know, with, with, you know, we're able to do the past few years and we're trying to get back into is why I'm trying to get some of these training trainer programs up. We're able to provide a lot of training in-house, we have certified instructors, we have certified, pretty much in every genre you can possibly imagine, that we'll offer a fire officer class here and teach it for free, you know, to meet those, those up and coming standards. ACLS, all the mandatory things are always taken care of, and those are definitely implemented into the budget. You know, the extra money we're asking for, the three hundred per person is, you know, above and beyond to, for development, you know. One thing we're really looking at too is, is, is personnel development. Again, we have engineers, that person coming up behind them, a relief driver. Well, I would like that relief driver to be as certified as that person they're replacing that day. So looking at some of those gaps and what we're trying to establish there is that's where some of these, that training money can come. And be able to send that person to get state certified as a pump operator. And, you know, eventually, I, I like to say, we're, we're planting the seeds now, so when trees grow, there's gonna be shade that you and I, that, you know, everyone here won't see, you know, that's, that's really what we're trying to get to, is, is developing as best we can.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Chief McKinley.
I'll screw that up, I promise you. Mayor, Commissioners, I lost one of them, you want me to wait for him?
Nah, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening or afternoon, whatever it might be. For the past five years, we've looked at how to best police the city and tweak our budget. We've looked at technology to help us work smarter with the resources that we have. We've also recognized the agency, reorganized the agency a couple of times to try to be more efficient in the services that we provide to the community. Additionally, we have developed some performance measures that we use to review our performance. Just last week, we had our accreditation assessment, and the assessment team has informed us they will recommend the commission, to the commission for Florida law enforcement accreditation, that the Apopka Police Department be re-accredited without any restrictions. So that'll happen in October, so that's a big milestone, because your first re-accreditation is usually your most difficult, to make sure that you're following all the procedures and guidelines they put in place. Accreditation for us was a significant shift in the way we were doing business, but I'm glad to say that we're gonna be recommended for re-accreditation in October before the full board. Based on the changes and measurements, we monitor, we have submitted our budget, and we've prepared a presentation to document our accomplishments, along with providing our concerns as we move forward. This is just a quick overview of where our budgets have been over the last five years. They've ebbed and flowed, some of those changes are due to the red light camera being out, going out, so that budget's been adjusted to that. But roughly the last couple of years, our budget has been pretty close to the same. Obviously, making safety a priority is important. Safety is a top concern in numerous community and political surveys. Public safety fosters trust, gets people engaged in their communities, and supports economic activity. Public safety perceptions are used in quality-of-life rankings. Places with lower crime rates are perceived as more desirable and attracted, attract visitors, businesses, and new residents, increased talent pool. When people feel safe, they conduct business in our community and participate in local business, dining, entertainment offerings. Public safety is a location factor for companies investing in our community, for their employees, visitors, property, and insurance cost. Some of the police department's accomplishments over the last year, we sent one of our sergeants to Command Officer Development School, it's a nationally-recognized training school from the University of Louisville. Two of our lieutenants attended the Public Safety Leadership Development Certification Program to develop them in leadership, that's put on by the University of Central Florida. We've also, were awarded $79,000 in grants, and we've applied for an additional $135,000 in grants. School safety, as everybody's aware, we were able to put our four SROs into our elementary schools to meet the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act last year. Our community policing, we continue to increase and improve our community engagement by attending and holding events throughout the community. Prior to COVID-19, officers continued to engage with the community by playing basketball, reading to the children, participating in teaching, raising money for charities, and et cetera. Each member of the agency is empowered to be part of our community commitment. Our shop with the cop this year was very successful again, and we were able to provide a Christmas to over 110 children. A new canine was purchased with funding from our community partners due to the unexpected early retirement of one of our canines. The elementary school officers continue to teach the magic program and engage with our fifth graders in their schools. Three officers, with the assistance of Mayor Nelson, completed the 50-yard challenge, where they mowed yards throughout our community of those needing assistance with getting that done. Since COVID-19, we continue to engage our community as best we can. We have done several drive-by birthday parties for kids that wanted to see police cars. We've done some drive-bys, and we got another request just yesterday to do another one. So we continue to try to engage with our community as much as we can under these difficult Code enforcement collected over $155,000 in fines, they closed 256 cases, they demolished several unsafe structures to make way for new and safer development on the property. Our criminal investigations division, after the tragic death of a 15-year-old in several shootings in the Apopka area, we began an operation to identify those involved in the violence with the intent of reducing the uptick in violence. As a result of the operation, to date, has resulted in 12 firearms being seized and taken off the streets, three search warrants served, and 18 arrests made for various charges. Additionally, a significant amount of intelligence information has been obtained related to the continued violence occurring in the southern section of the city. Pay with the assistance of the mayor, the city administrator, and our commissioners, we were able to raise a starting and top-out pay for our law enforcement professionals, making us more competitive in the market as it relates to recruiting, hiring, and retention. Growing population increases our demand. Apopka continues to grow. In 2010, there were 15,707 households in Apopka. In 2019, the number of households had increased to 19,537. This represents a 24.3% increase in the number of households. This is an average of 2.7% growth in households per year over that period. The 2010 census showed a population in Apopka of 41,542. In April 2019, the City of Apopka's Community Development Department estimated the population in Apopka at 52,404 residents. This represents a 26.1% increase in just residential population in nine years. This does not include commercial or industrial growth during this period. This is an average growth of 2.9% for each one of those years on average. Most taxing on resources, response times and services provided to our community is a requirement to cover the 35 square miles that the city has become. With 112 authorized sworn positions, this equates to 3.15 officers per square mile. The average officer-per-square-mile ratio for the local cities is 5.27 officers per square mile. I'll get into this a little bit later in the presentation with more details. The road improvements that come with growth are greater, are great for providing easy access to the city, for our citizens and businesses, however, they also create an easy access for those individuals that wish to prey in our community. The improved roads have created easy ingress and egress to the city. Just recently, we arrested three individuals from Brevard County, I'm sorry, Broward County, for committing auto burglaries within the City of Apopka. Law enforcement is known for years, there was a connection to crime along the I-4 corridor stretching from Tampa to Brevard County. With easy access now from I-4 to 429, 451, and the Maitland Boulevard, we see them coming here. We recently just arrested two, 14-year-old and 15-year-old from South Orlando for committing auto burglaries also. So we've got all these nice roads, but it also makes it easy for to cross jurisdictions and get to where you want to be. And this is just an overview of the Apopka population. The estimates for 2020, 2021, and 2022 are based on a average of the last 14 years of a 3.37% increase in growth and population. Show you in a little bit, the growth that's coming to Apopka might surpass that, but I tried to be just a little bit reserved on my projections there. Currently, there are 5,777 dwelling units that are planned for the City of Apopka. Of these, 2,619 are in the planning phases, 1,240 are under construction, and 1,918 are in the conceptual plan. Based on community development estimates of 2.682 persons per household, this will add an additional 15,494 residents to the City of Apopka over the next several years. In addition to these residential growth, there are approximately three mil, a little over 3 million, almost 4 million square foot of industrial and commercial growth planned under construction or in the conceptual plan. The city is modifying the land use in several areas of the city to allow for denser populations. All of this growth is going, all of this growth is going to tax the already limited resources of the Apopka Police Department if not planned for appropriately. These are authorized positions since 2007. You can see in 2007, we're at 90, we're currently at 112 sworn officers. Our local agency officer ratio, you see this all the time, we're currently at 2.14 officers per thousand. The local average is 2.39 officers per thousand, and the state average is 2.43 officers per thousand. And you can see some of the cities and where they fall with what their population is. Apopka police per capita from 2007 to 2019, you can see that currently our per capita for this year is lower than it was in 2007, although we've seen extreme growth in the city causing our per capita to decrease. Over the last five years that I've been here, each year we come to the budget presentation, I try to lay out a plan of how many officers we need to catch us up to the state average or the local average of officers per thousand, and because of budget restrictions, I'm not saying anything about anybody, but we haven't ever met those projections, and we're starting to see the ramifications of that now. In 2021, based on population estimate, if we don't add any officers, our per capita's gonna drop to 2.07. For the last couple of years, I talk about 2.14, 2.41, and 2.43 is state average, and the 2.39 is the local average, but it really, I think, isn't understood until you actually put those into numbers. And the difference between 2.13 officers per thousand versus 2.3 or 2.4, which is the local and state average officers, it doesn't seem like a lot until you look at the actual numbers. To reach the state average of 2.4 police officers per thousand residents, the Apopka Police Department would need to have 126 authorized sworn law enforcement positions right now. We have 112. We currently have 112 positions. To reach the state average, we'd have to hire an additional 14 police officers to get to the state average. To reach a local municipality average, we would need to hire approximately 13 police officers. So it puts those 2.1, 2.07, to 2.43 into perspective. This puts the Apopka Police Department behind the number of personnel needed to continue to provide at least the current level of service we provide to our community. If we do not add any police officers, fiscal year will fall even further behind. Local cities by square mile, this is something we haven't looked at in the past. As a president of the Orange Osceola County Police Chiefs Association, I sent out a survey to all the agencies and brought that back, looking at how many officers per square mile they actually had. So you can see where most of them fall. Apopka, we fall at 3.5 officers, officers per square mile, and you're looking at, let me see here, lost my point here. This will become important when we start looking at our response times in a little bit, as you see how far we're having to travel in this 35 square miles that the city has become. This average city's listed on this chart is 22.66 square miles, and you can see we're at the 35 square miles.
Can you go back?
Yep, I'm sorry, I went too far. I told you I'd mess up with this little thing. This slide shows how many officers each city has per square mile, the average number of officers per square mile for these cities is 5.16. The cities of Altamont, Windermere, Newson, Merton, and Leesburg were removed because they were outliers in their numbers, I removed them from the numbers so they didn't skew the numbers. I figured you'd catch me on that one, Commissioner Becker, if I included two cities that had 10 officers per square miles. Threw the number up there, looking nice. As you can see, in addition to the low per capita, we also have a low officer-per-square-mile ratio than other local agencies. Now, I'm not saying that we need to be at 5.16, because we have still parts of our community that are rural up to the north a little bit, that hasn't developed, but that, we all know that that development's coming, and it's coming relatively quickly. And our response times, I'll show you in a little bit, to the north and to the south, where our development is going, not even to mention out to the east, is starting to increase, and it has increased the last two years. The challenge facing the Apopka Police Department is not just the population growth, but the sprawling growth of the city. The Apopka Police Department has an average of 3.25, 3.2 officers per square mile, while the average officers per square mile in local law enforcement agencies is 5.16. The average area covered by those agencies is 22.66 square miles with an average of 114.9 officers. The Apopka Police Department is required to cover 35 square miles with 112 police officers. This lack of sufficient personnel is affecting our response times to some parts of the city, and as the city continues to expand, our response times and level of service to our community will continue to be affected. We must also take into consideration what our city looks like. Like I said earlier, some of these areas are still rural, and I get that, so we don't necessarily need to be at the 5.16, but we still have a great distance to cover with the amount of officers that we have. As I mentioned, if you look at our response times, we're doing good with our emergency times, we're pretty much staying static at a little bit less than 28-second decrease in response times, but when you look at our non-emergency times, they're increasing by, each one of them by over a minute. This is the response times comparison. We went up in 2018, we continue to go up again in 2019, except for with our emergency response calls for service, but you can see on a routine call for service, we're at approximately 13 minutes and 28 seconds to respond to that call for service. This is by zones, and as I said, you can see that where we're gaining time is up to the north, up to the south, and I would anticipate that we're gonna start seeing a significant increase out to the east, once some of those developments are done off Peterson Road and at 429 and 441 area. I also want to note that not only is our response time, but our communication center has to handle all these increased calls for service for the fire department, the police department, to include Maitland's police department, and our dispatch times are becoming a little bit slower also. The community redevelopment area. We all know where that is, what it is. It's important that I point this out, because this is also affecting some of our response times. Violent crime in the CRA area. It was down a little bit, down 1% in 2019 versus 2018, but violent crime in the CRA area counts for 31% of the violent crime in the City of Apopka. And that's just a one-square-mile area within the City of Apopka, 633 acres. Property crime in the CRA area accounts for 18% of the property crime in the city. Most of our property crime becomes auto burglaries and auto thefts out in some of our larger subdivisions, but when you overall look at the CRA area, 18% of our crime occurs there. When you look at all of our crimes, all the crime in the CRA area accounts for 19% of the crime in the city. And the reason I bring that up is because the CRA area is in the center of the city, and that's where we're spending a lot of our time. As we spend more time in the center of the city, that's increasing our response times back out to the north and back down to the south. So we're spending a lot of our effort here in the CRA area, which we are trying to address. We got our bike unit back up, they're spending days just riding the bikes out here, trying to interact with the community and address some of the crime problems we're seeing here in the CRA area and the downtown area. But it's causing our resources to be here, which is increasing our response times to the north and to the south. Our UCR numbers. The good news is, is violent crime for last year was down 5% in the City of Apopka. I wish I could tell you the next slide was so, as flattering as that one is, but it's not. Property crimes in the City of Apopka was up 28%. That was driven largely by an increase in auto theft. Auto theft cases were up 51. Auto burglaries were up 194 cases. You hear us and see us on social media all the time, asking people to please lock their doors, nine, on their cars, 90 to 95% of our auto burglaries would unlock cars as people walk through the neighborhoods and just open up car doors and take out of those what they want. Overall, the increase was 422 crimes. We deal with such small numbers, the 28% sounds like a large number. It is a large number. One auto burglary more than we had last year is, is not acceptable by any means. Overall, crime in the City of Apopka because of our property crimes was up 23.7%. The good news is, is we've made some adjustments. The unit that I told you about now, that was addressing the violent crime in the south part of the city, that seems to be calming down, so we've moved them into the subdivisions. And recently, like I said, we've arrested people from Broward County, we've arrested people from Orlando, and some people from Apopka actually in progress, auto burglaries to reduce those numbers. Our numbers look a little, a lot better. We're down about 10% year-to-date in property crime so far from last year. year-to-date in property crime so far from last year. Our calls for service. Our PSAP comparison. This chart shows the 911 calls for service handled by the Apopka Police Department's Communication Center compared to other agencies. Currently, our dispatchers dispatch calls for service, answer calls for service, and handle teletype duties with the three police departments and the fire department. Agencies such as OPD and OCSO have the ability to have personnel assigned to specific functions such as call-taking, dispatching, and teletype operators due to the number of personnel and the way their communication centers operate. For multi-agency PSAPs such as the Apopka Police Department's, answers a higher volume of 911 calls per employee than the other two agency PSAPs in central Florida. The other two multi-agency PSAPs are Winter Garden and Winter Park and we handle significantly more calls for service than what they do. Currently, we have 26 personnel in our communications center along with one manager. Whenever one is at a station, we have the ability to have personnel dispatch and handle teletype duties while having one call taker and the supervisors free to oversee the communication center and assist where needed. You've heard me say this last couple of years. Most of the time, our supervisors in our comm center are handling the radio channel or a teletype channel and they're not able to oversee the comm center if we have a critical incident occur, which could be problematic. And as we continue to grow and our communication center, our calls for service continue to grow, we're going to have to address that communication center in the near future to make sure we have sufficient personnel on duty at all times. Because right now, we have personnel that if one of them takes off, the supervisor is on a radio channel and they're not able to supervise and monitor the entire communication center. So in the near future, we're going to have to address that problem. Calls for service into the communication center, you can see that they continually increase from year to year, from 2016 to 2019. Calls for service in the communication center for the fire department. Obviously, we took on the increase. Calls for service for the contract area, that affected our communication center because they're the ones handling those dispatch calls. Our 2021 budget. It was presented to you. In a few minutes, I'll go through it. I tried to make it pretty self-explanatory. You can see in bold red all of my comments. I'm sure if you've looked at it. Most of our budget had no changes to it. Anything that was an increase was usually due to a vendor increase and that was documented in there. A couple of programs to be a little bit more efficient on how we download cell phones when we have a warrant to download cell phones and everything, save us some man-hours to do some of that stuff.
Chief, before you get too far, because I might want to reference a slide, a few slides back. Can we go back a little bit? Just because I had two quick questions.
Which one?
And you're, are you driving the rest of the budget conversation through PowerPoint? Because I just don't want you to go too far and then we have to go backtrack.
No.
Go back to that slide where it talks about the ramp up of sworn officers. You know, it was flat for a while and then, you know, it was kind of that 10-year walk.
That wasn't back a couple of slides.
Yes, hence my point. I didn't want to go too far.
Let's see. That's not it. That one?
Yeah, there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it was, it's interesting because you look, what's the furthest back that it goes?
2007.
2007. So it was flat there and obviously, we've experienced a tremendous amount of growth on your one graphic since 2010. I mean, I think 26% is what you said. And from 2010 to here, to where we're at now, it's probably 34%. So the number of officers has outpaced what the population growth has been. But what would be interesting to see is, you know, as we've started to ramp up sworn officers, the count of sworn officers, what has that done to our overall crime rate and how we would gauge success in terms of law enforcement within the city of Apopka? Is there any direct line relation to, hey, if we increase the number of officers, it's going to do X, Y, and Z for the populace?
Well, I think, I think the biggest thing it's going to do for the populace is, is our response times and obviously, our presence to some parts of the community that currently we're not in all the time because we're spending a lot of time in the CRA area. I think it's important to understand that on our midnight shift to cover 35 square miles with the personnel we currently have, we usually have nine people on duty to cover 35 square miles. That's a lot. And that's one of the reasons that you see, once you get to a midnight shift, our auto burglaries, which occur overnight, we can't be in all these subdivisions out there. We've created this special unit, which I can't keep together quite honestly much longer because I'm taking away from other things we need to be doing to have this squad out there that's out four to five nights a week, doing nothing but concentrating on our subdivisions to try to reduce our property crimes. Because, let's face it, people don't like their cars broken into. They don't like their stuff stolen. I get that. Neither do I. And like I said, one auto burglary more than we had last year is unacceptable. We need to get that number going down. But we're unable to be in these numerous subdivisions and driving around to deter some of the crime that's going on or catch it in progress like we're doing currently right now with this unit.
And then one other question. So on one of the slides, you talked about if you're using the 2.4 officers per capita, where we would need to be at is 126. The other stat, you know, I think it was 5.28 or something for officers per square mile. If you, if you got to that, what would that number be? And if, and what's the better metric? You just described about geographic locations.
And there's, there's a balance there. And I didn't put those numbers in there for that. It's 68, 68 more officers, which is absurd. We know, we all know we're not going to get to the 68. I took it out of the presentation and I took it out because, again, we have to look at it collectively. It's not just, you know, I can't say that we need 5.16 officers per square mile like Akoi does because Akoi has a denser population. They have a population somewhat equal to ours, but they're only covering 11 square miles. We have a population of, you know, 52,400, whatever it is right now, over, spread out over 35 square miles. The problem's becoming is, we have to have officers out there in these outlined areas to do preventative patrol and make sure that our response time goes. So I didn't want to come up here and say that, you know, I need 68 officers to meet that 5.16 officer per square mile because that would be misleading for the fact that some of the areas still up to the north, Plymouth Reno, Kelly Park, it's still barren, but we, it's important to me and for everybody to understand that that's where our growth's going. We're going to have problems up there, just like we're going to have problems around the hospitals that continues to grow. And now, out east off Peterson Road where the subdivisions are going, the big development that's going on at 429 and 441, our response times out there are going to continue to suffer. And, you know, what we're paying for is, like you mentioned, all those years where growth in the police department was flat, but growth in the city wasn't flat. And now we've got to catch up to the point where, you know, we need 13 to 14 police officers to get to that average per capita, per officer. So, you know, I'm not coming up here and like I said, we've come up and tried to come up with a plan. I realize we have some significant budget issues to overcome this year. You're going to see that, and I'm still going to ask for four officers. It's on my wish list. But I think that, you know, if possible, we need to try to start catching up this gap or we're going to be in serious trouble because, for whatever reason, the growth's not stopping. We're still approving subdivisions. Plans are still coming in here. I'm on the Development Review Committee. I see the plans that come in. I showed you the, you know, almost 5,800 residents that are planned or in the development phase to be built and we have to be prepared for that. We, we're behind now and we're just falling further behind each year.
Mr. Smith, you scribbling some notes down. You got a question?
I'll write.
Okay.
I will address our wish list. You know, that's exactly what it was, a wish list, the way the budget was prepared this year. Some of the things that are on the wish list to me are really a necessity at this particular point in time. I'm not going to get into some of the wish list stuff that is some of the low-dollar stuff. Unfortunately, to me, our manpower situation is, is what's going to take priority for me this year. And my request off that wish list is four new police officers. Last year, we were authorized four additional positions. But you have to remember that when you talk about those four positions, they did nothing for my patrol because all they did is backfill the four that I had to put into the SRO program the year before that. So our patrol numbers and the numbers out there that are responding to calls for service did not increase. It stayed the same. We just had to use those four positions to backfill the positions we needed for the, to come into compliance with the Stoneman, Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act. We need to keep up with residential and commercial population increases. Currently, like I said, there's 5,777 residential units are in the conceptual planning or planned or under construction. Again, almost 4 million square foot of industrial and commercial space, which is going to bring employees and other personnel and traffic into the community. Assist with the need to improve our per capita numbers to be closer in line with the state average. In order to meet the state average of 2.4, as we mentioned, we needed to add approximately 14 officers. I understand we're in a budget situation. It's more of a, for me, how do we get there over the next three to five years and catch up and catch up and keep up with the growth? I think all of us would probably agree that over the next several years, we're looking at an increase of probably 1,000 residents a year. And that's two and a half officers a year, just to keep up with pace of what the growth may be in this city for what all's planned and what's coming. And most importantly, we need to ensure that the police department continues to provide at least the same level of service to our community that we currently provide. I know that you all hear compliments all the time about the things we do in this community. But if we don't catch up a little bit, we're going to have to be looking at what we don't respond to, what we don't provide to the community. And I don't think any of us want to be there. You know, we see it across the country where they're asking police departments not to do certain things. Well, some of those things that we do, that we don't necessarily need to do, lent our community policing. You know, do we necessarily need to respond to the snake in the backyard or the snake in the pool? Absolutely not. Do we do it because we're the only ones available to go and deal with the situation? Absolutely. But you know what? When we deal with that situation, it leaves that community member feeling good about what the Apopka Police Department did to resolve their problem. And to them, it was a crisis. To the rest of us, it might not be a crisis. You hear me say this all the time. And I say it to the officers all the time. People don't wake up in the morning and say, you know what? I think I'm going to call the Apopka Police Department, just to see what they're doing today. When they call us, in their mind, they're in a crisis and they want us to come and try to resolve that crisis for us. And we try to do the best we can to resolve that crisis. Whether it's the eight-year-old who won't go to school, is that something we should probably respond to? Probably not. But if we can handle it in a positive manner for the child and for the parent, that's part of our community policing. They have a positive image of what a police officer is and a police officer is a human being. For capital, eight patrol vehicles, four vehicles for the authorized positions that we got last year. We're not budgeted for last year. They need to be budgeted for so we can purchase those. Four patrol vehicles for the new officers and four unmarked vehicles, replacement vehicles. Of those eight initial patrol vehicles, four of them are for replacement vehicles. All of those vehicles, those four replacement patrol vehicles have on average of approximately 116,000 miles on, on average. Some of them are a little bit less. I think the lowest is 114,000 and the highest is like 137,000 miles on those. And they're not safe for patrol vehicles and driving fast and so forth. And then we have four unmarked vehicles for CID and those four replacements on average have 115,000 miles on them. I mentioned our communication center. I would obviously like to add additional people there. I realize the budget is going to probably not allow that this year and we'll address it another year. The four police officers are what are our priority to me. Their equipment, their vehicles, and the other vehicles that we need are the priority out of what's on our wish list. The rest of it, I understand, we'll look at in the future. Some of those things on the wish list were, you know, our detectives use their cell phones, their personal cell phones to conduct probably 90% of the business that they do when they contact victims and witnesses. I think in the future, we need to look at providing them with a cellphone stipend. It's not that much money. But they're probably using their cell, personal cell phones more for police department business and to communicate with victims, witnesses, and suspects than they are their own personal things. But again, at this point in time, I'm just going to focus on the four police officers. I understand it's a significant budget impact, especially in a tight budget that we're currently in. But I think it is important that we continue to plan for the future. Any questions on the PowerPoint presentation? And if not, I'll move into the budget.
One question. Going back to the vehicles there, are we on par for our replacement of outdated vehicles in a sense that is not going to create a big backlog that is going to hit us in future years? You know, are we getting, starting to get there? I know you're asking for eight of them. And some of those are replacements. Some are for new officers, if we're able to do that.
Well, actually, if you look at that, eight of them would be for the, four of them would be for the new officers we got budgeted for in this fiscal year. Four would be for next, the four if we got those in next fiscal year. And then four of them are just replacement. We are trying to get onto a cycle. You know, I'm not going to just buy vehicles just to get us onto a cycle. It looks like, from my projections, anywhere from seven to nine years is what the patrol cars are going to last us on mileage. I know that they're expensive. They're, you know, the Ford Interceptor, by the time it's outfitted with lights and all the equipment on it, is $50,000. But if you take that out over a seven to nine-year period, you're talking $7,500 a year. It's not that expensive. So we're getting a lot more use out of our vehicles than what some of the larger agencies do. They have more area to cover and everything else. Our inspections are helping with our vehicles. We're making sure that they're waxed every year, that that black paint's staying up to date. Anything that's wrong with them, we're getting fixed to make sure that they can last us for that seven to nine-year timeframe. I think eight years is probably going to be what the average looks like at this particular point in time.
So you feel like?
I'm sorry.
So you feel like, as with our officers, there's, there's a little bit of a backlog is starting to build up as far as our replacement? I just want to think longer term on that as well as?
We went a couple of years where we got quite a few vehicles. So that sort of
Helped get us?
Get us to where we're at. We're not in bad shape with vehicles. That's why, right now, that's why you don't see it. Can I tell you that over the next couple of years, I'm going to average it out to where we're getting the 17 on average that we need every year? Probably not. That's still a shell game. I'm trying my best to make sure that we don't, you know, I don't have to stand up here and go, hey, I need 24 cars this year. Trying to get it averaged out to where we're, you know, it looks like 15 cars a year is what it's going to have to be in addition to whatever our growth vehicles are. So we're looking at that. These newer cars, you know, they last, they're holding up fairly well. The engines are holding up fairly well. Used to be, especially with the dark hood, like the black hoods that we have on ours, that would affect the life of the engines. But with these new engines and everything, the cars are holding up fairly well. They're expensive, so they probably should hold up fairly well, too. The mayor hits me up all the time. Every year I come in there, he goes, isn't there a cheaper car? There are cheaper cars. There's good things and bad things about them. But the most, the worst thing about them is, is our, you know, I went down and spoke to Charlie at Fleet about Ford vehicles and that's primarily what we use. If we go to a Dodge product or to a Chevy product, he has to retrain his technicians. He has to retool his inventory as far as electronics and stuff. And they have to have a bigger parts room to hold the parts for the additional cars. So there's a payoff there. We're saving, you know, we might be paying a little bit more upfront for the Ford Explorer right now, but at the end of the day, we're saving the mechanics or, you know, that section of the city having to do a little bit more in, as far as parts and equipment and other things and training for their personnel. So.
And just one other question. With our impact fees, how, how much, I guess I would like to get a place to where what we have coming in and the growth begins to sustain itself. Obviously, that can only be for certain things. Are we in a healthy place as far as that type of planning for impact that it will help deal with as we have growth? It will, you know, help sustain and bring in?
Since we started the impact fees and in discussions I've had with Mr. Bass, the impact fees, we are allowing to build because we're only a couple of years out from getting out of that police department. And you're talking a significant investment that we're going to have to leverage those impact fees against, probably to get a loan to build a public safety building to replace Station One and our current police department. You know, our current police department's had termites twice. Might just be a day before that roof falls on my head. You know, it's getting too small as we continue to grow. We need to look into the future. Our communication center is way too small. Our consoles are way too old compared to the new consoles. We're going to be facing in the very near future a $450,000 price tag to go to a multiplex system so that we can communicate more effectively than with surrounding law enforcement agencies. Under the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act, we had to be able to program into our radio system, the primary channels of all the law enforcement agencies in the area that we could possibly receive a 911 call for. We couldn't reach Reedy Creek. Now, it's, we're probably not going to get a 911 call on a cell phone or a landline from the Reedy Creek area. So we're able to meet the guidelines. But I know Rob had, and his personnel did a great job getting that capability. But because we don't have the multiplex system that the other, all the other law enforcement agencies and fire departments have in the county, we have some communication. And what multiplex does is no matter where we travel, it uses the other agency's repeaters to send our signal. And so it's, and I'm not going to tell you I'm an expert on this by any means. And I don't want to mislead you by anything I say. So I'm going to keep my conversation about multiplex in very short. Rob will probably already tell you. I may have already said something that's wrong. I don't have any idea. But it's $450,000 to take. And we, we are on a different encryption than the rest of the county. And we need to be on the same encryption system so that we can communicate better with the other first responder agencies within Orange County. And that's just a decision that the city made a long time ago to be on a different radio system than what the rest of the county was. But we are going to have to fix radio system than what the rest of the county was. But we are going to have to fix that in the near future. And as more requirements come out for communication, ease of communication between agencies, right now, that bill's looking like about $450,000. Tried to work with the county to see if we can get them to pay for it. We're looking for some grants to see if we can find grants to pay for it. So far, there's really nothing out there that, that'll cover that upgrade.
So basically, our impact really needs to be focused on the, the most important infrastructure, and so it doesn't help us in some of these other areas.
That's the way we've always handled it. And I mean, I'll let Mr. Bass speak to it if he wants to, but it's my understanding that, you know, if we wanna bond something, we need to have those impact fees. We need to build those impact fees so that we have something, you know, that shows what our impact fees are versus what our bonds may be and how we're gonna pay for it and everything else. So we've continued to let them build. We do have in the budget, in the capital improvement budget, I think it's $35,000 of our impact fees and $35,000 of the fire department's impact fees to do a needs assessment on a public safety building. There would be a fire department and a police department and plans right now, be it where the police department currently exists, and use that land there as the facility. And, but our communication center is, is too small, like I said. Part of the goal is to bring a, a better emergency operations center in there, move our server room into that new building so that all of our servers that Rob has scattered in his department throughout are in one location. There's a lot of things that we could do in that infrastructure, and that's what we've been working on, saving the, that money for.
And one of the things I was gonna ask on our grants line on 5202, there's no projection there. Is that just, again, just to be conservative? So we're pleasantly surprised as we are able to appropriate more grants? Is that why that was zeroed out basically for this year?
I'm not sure why.
I think, don't we have just a grant fund that for all, all departments in case something comes in?
Yeah, we have a grant fund where we would move, so we would move monies into this line from there if we were to get a grant. But we don't really budget grants because we don't know that we're gonna actually get it. But we have that pool, that pot of money that you guys put away, and what we would do is we would take it from there.
Because 2020 was budgeted for 8,500, and then it's back to zero this.
Right, which means they were awarded a grant.
$250,000 in the...
Right, we have that pool. That, and what you had, what you're seeing is, we had, there was a, there are grants, some grants are automatically get, you know, so we, we anticipate that we're gonna get them because we got them the year before. But with COVID and things that are going on right now, it's kinda tough just to assume all of those numbers.
Yeah.
But we do have a pool. So if they were to be awarded a grant, we could go to that, that designated amount of money and, and do our match with it.
Again, as, as long as we're not building our projections based upon a we might or we might not.
No, we are not doing that.
That's tremendous.
We'll tell you what you see is...
And usually what Jamie does is she comes to you with a budget amendment to transfer the grant funds from that account into our account so that we can spend it. You know, we just got the $48,000 COVID grant where we're buying some of the equipment for PPEs, hand sanitizer stations for all the city buildings, for the employee areas so that they can have hand sanitizers. A couple, two or three, I can't remember the exact number, of the UV lights that Chief Wyland mentioned so that we can put them inside some of the buildings and de-sanit, clean them up when we need to. So, you know, we have grants in the process. We normally, as Mr. Bass said, we get a vest allotment grant almost every year. Doesn't cover all the bulletproof vests that we have to buy, but it does offset those. So, you know, we're always out there, and Dr. Jackson's great. One of the things we probably need to discuss, or need to discuss with the mayor is, do we want to, now that we're done with our cops grant, do we wanna apply for another cops grant and see if we can get, you know, some of the officers paid for that we need through the cops program? And that's something that we can discuss and see where we need to go from there. But, you know, with that grant, once a grant's done, they're on your payroll, or you gotta fire them, one or the other. So, all right, we'll start with 22, I'm sorry, anybody else?
No, you keep going.
Okay. 2210, like I said, as you go through our budget, you'll, you'll see an increase in, in 2210 as far as the line goes for personnel and stuff like that. We made some adjustments in personnel. The accreditation manager, I moved directly underneath me. Accreditation's important to me, and I wanted her to have access directly to me so there's no chain of command. She reports directly to me, just like community policing reports directly to me because that's important for me, and also our legal advisor, but she's paid out of the legal fund, the legal budget. If you look at 3100, you can see that there were no changes from last year's numbers. 3400, there's nothing in. 4,000, we did move all the accreditation costs because I moved the accreditation manager underneath the chief's budget. All the costs associated with the accreditation came underneath my budget also. The reaccreditation has to be renewed every three years. The accreditation conferences, I mentioned, we're gonna be recommended for reaccreditation. That's in October, so we need to cover that funding in next year's budget. Other than that, I don't think there's anything else. We removed some of the Commission on Law Enforcement Accreditation Assessors' Fees. This year's assessment was done virtually, so they didn't come here. They actually, we had to take pictures of things and send them to them so that they could see what we had and what we didn't have. But those will come back into the budget in the years that they're applicable. I just left them there so that we don't overlook them. 4100, there's nothing. 4200 posted, no changes to that. 4300, we didn't increase based on our expenditures from this previous year. I think we're working on why that number increased. I don't know that I've re...
We just didn't have all the meters in the right positions.
Right, for some reason, our...
Everybody's gonna be allocated properly.
Put them in the correct, we put them in the correct department.
Yeah, for some reason, ours went up this year and...
Somebody else's went down.
Somebody else's went down. But I think they're looking at that and making sure that our numbers are right. So we increased it a little bit to make sure that we have that covered in case the current numbers are the right numbers. There's nothing in 4500. 4600, there's no changes to any of the budget amounts in 4600. In 4650, there were no changes there either. 4700, no changes to any of those. We've tried over the last couple of years to get this to a line item where we can just look and see what our costs are, what needs to go up, what doesn't need to go out. And then I just use my bright, bold red lettering to let you see what changes are there to try to make this simple. 4900, there were no changes. 4902, no changes. 5100, we moved the, we removed the printer cartridges that we'd been budgeting for because they're underneath our maintenance agreement, so we didn't need that fund. And then the other ones, there's no changes. 5200, operating supplies. We increased our condolence stuff, things we send for funerals of family members, or agency members whose family may pass or something like that. We send them obviously flowers and support their endeavors. And 5202, that's just a fund used for the cops and firefighters when we, when we have that. It's not a budgeted item. That's just where Jamie puts the money as it comes in. 5250, no changes. 5400, again, some of the accreditation fees were moved over there into my budget from the other budget. The TAC dues, that's not due again until 2022, so we'll put that back in the budget then. 5500, increased due to the FPCA Midwinter Conference, increase in the Florida Police Chiefs Association Conference. Myself and my two captains attend that conference here locally. We don't travel to the summer one that's up in the Panhandle. We just stay and attend the local one. Nothing in 6300. 6400, nothing in there. Any questions on 2210 before I go into 2220?
Well, let me ask. I, I know you said you wanted 18 officers, and I just wondered if that was included in that 28% increase, 25% increase in salaries?
No, I, I think that was because I moved people into the chief's office, so you'll see a decrease in some of the other departments. But no, those four officers, you said 18, I'm, I'm liking the way you're thinking. Yes, those 18 officers that you've approved, Commissioner Smith, are not in the budget currently, but I'm sure you'll figure out a way to get them in there.
All right.
No, they were put on the wish list the way the budget was done, so they're not in the current budget. The officers, their equipment, nor their vehicles are in the budget. They're on the wish list budget.
Including the equipment is on the wish list?
Yes, sir. So 2220, 3100, pre-employment exams. The exams went from $300 to $350 from our vendor. Plus, we have some vacancies we need to fill, so to make sure that we have enough, that Gym equipment in 3400. Our courier service, there's an increase due to the increase in vendor cost. That's it. 4,000, no change. I don't know if I'm going too fast. Let me know, or tell me to stop if you wanna discuss something. I try to make it easy so we can just find the bright, bold red lettering there. No change. 4200, there's nothing. 4400, no change. Nothing in 4500. 4600, that's the big one. Some of it's been moved. In copy and machine, we added due to overage and printing cost. The majority of it was no change. If there was anything, most of it was due to vendor increases. Until we get down to the bottom, we haven't budgeted for, to have additional spare body cameras. And when they fall off and break, we have to find the money, so we budgeted for them this year. The IT upgrades, Rob's always dipping into my budget, taking money out of it for his IT stuff, so I had to increase that a little bit because he seems to have free rein at coming after my budget. But I don't see his. He can see mine, but I can't get to his. I'm trying to figure that one out.
He goes where the money is.
He's obviously worked for the city longer than I have, huh? He knows how to get there. And then the additional program that helps us with dealing with vehicle crash drawings. The state used to cover that fee for our vehicle crashes and the capability to have a drawing template. They don't get along with the company that they used to purchase it from, so now it's upon the local agencies to purchase that crash template program. 4650, no change. 4700, no change. 5100, no changes. 5200, you got an increase due to vendor cost, most of those. Some of them we reduced based on our past expenditures. One of the things we try to do every year is look at our last three years of expenditures, average those out, and see if we're in line with where we can be and if we can reduce any of those numbers. So we reduce those. I don't think When you get to line 23, we consolidated some of the supplies and got rid of some of the lines, so everything's in one line. And we used to have it scattered throughout different lines in the budget. We've just moved all that and tried to consolidate everything into one area. Any questions on that one? That's a pretty big one. I don't, I think the majority of it just stayed the same. 5250, no changes. 5400, no changes. Nothing in 5450. 5500, there is a cost from last year for emergency vehicle operations. We have to rent the Lake County driving range to go out there and do our biannual driving recertification. So that $3,000 is the cost to rent the Lake County driving range. It's not a golf driving range. 6300, there's nothing. 6400, this is the vehicles that I talked about, four, the first four for the positions we got in last year's budget that weren't budgeted for. And then the replacement vehicles, as you can see, you got mileage of 133,000, 118, 144, and 114,000. Those are some of our older vehicles. Any questions on 2220 before I move to 2230? Commissioner Smith, that's down 3.96%.
I saw that.
3100, there's an increase due to the vendor cost. Again, psychological exams went from $300 to $350, so we had to count for that. Nothing in 3400. 4,000, some of it we transferred to the training. Other than that, there were no changes. Nothing in 4100 changed. There's nothing in 4300. 4400, no changes. 4500, nothing. 4600, again, the big one. Believe the majority of those, again, were, were no change. We do have the Cell Bright on line six. It was increased due to an increase in vendor cost. And then the number 17, that's a new program that allows us to look at cell phones. When we get a warrant to download a cell phone, it gives us the ability to look at that data a lot more efficiently than what we're currently doing. It'll save us in man-hours. 4650, increased based on expenditures based on the first half of this year. 4700, no changes. 4902, no change. 4904, there's nothing. 5100, no change to any of those. 5200, I don't see any changes there. 5250, no change. 5400, no changes. Nothing in 5450. 5500, no changes. We just transferred the Command Officer Development Course over here to training, like I mentioned earlier. Nothing in 6300. And these, in 6400, the four replacement vehicles for the CID vehicles, 107,000, 117,000, 120,000, 117,000 on those vehicles. Those would be unmarked vehicles, so they're significantly less than what the marked units are.
For the, for the benefit of the public, you're talking miles, not dollars?
Yes. I'm sorry. I was explaining that to y'all to show y'all how old they, how old the vehicles were, what the mileage was. No, the average is $38,000 or less, because like I said, those are unmarked vehicles. They don't have all the significant equipment and the upgrades that the marked cars have. 2235, the crossing guards, pretty easy budget, nothing changed there. Dispatch, 3100, again, an increase for the psychological exams for new hires, went from $300 to $350. Nothing in 3400 changed. 4,000, no changes. 4100, no changes. 4300, no changes. 4600, no changes. 5100, no changes. 5200, uniform jackets. We had budgeted for uniform jackets to buy all the communication center employees jackets because it stays relatively cool in there with all the equipment. This was reduced, but it's to just cover any replacement jackets or any new employees that we hire, so that we'll have jackets for them. 5400, again, employment exams was increased due to the cost in, increase in the exams. Our wish list, as I discussed, for me, our, our priority is, you know, four police officers. I realize the budget's gonna be tight, and it may not happen this year, but we've gotta consider that we've gotta start catching up in the near future for that. On the wish list is an increase in the overtime for my community, community policing officer. We currently budget $500, but he's out in the community all the time and out, and it's, we've been over budget on that for the last couple of years. So we did ask for funding in that. So we did ask for funding in that, um, the four full-time officers. If you, uh, look at them, the, um, cost per officer, um, seventy-two thousand dollars for the first year, roughly two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, a little over two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in salary and wages. Uh, we asked for drone, drone monitoring program. We can do without that, uh, server for intersection cameras. We, once the red light cameras were done away with, last couple of years, we budgeted for intersection cameras so that we can monitor some of these bigger intersections. Because like I said, our criminals are coming in through some of our big intersections, um, and having cameras in those to monitor who's going in and out or have at least a record of what cars and individuals that went through those intersections. Uh, we've put those on hold for this year because of the budget criz- uh, crunch that we found ourselves in due to COVID. Um, they're not something that, uh, we're going to push for, uh, this year. The equipment for the new, for new officers is approximately seventy-two thousand dollars. That covers all their related equipment, their body armor, their firearm, uh, their rain gear, their leather gear, their body, uh, camera, and, uh, everything else. Uh, we do have thirteen thousand dollars in there for a rain structure. Our rain structure out at the range is, um, a little sketchy at best anymore. Uh, it's held up as best we can, uh, but eventually it's going to have to be replaced, but, um, we'll put it off another year. Uh, the vehicle for the four new officers is two hundred thousand dollars. And we'd like to at some point replace the fence around the range, but that's not a critical need at this point. Twenty-two thirty, we did ask for a clothing allowance increase for our detectives who wear a shirt and tie to work every day. But again, based on the budget numbers, we're willing to forego that and address that at a different time. I mentioned the cell phone stipend. Golf carts at the high school are getting old. They're eventually going to have to be replaced, but they're not critical at this time. And, um, eventually some of the gym equipment's going to need to be updated, but I don't think it's got a lot of wear and tear on it this year because it's been closed most of the year, so. The two new communications center personnel, we're going to have to address that in the near future. But again, the four sworn police officers are, uh, my priority this year. Any questions on any of that?
Any questions?
Yeah, one quick question. Um, so on your wish list item, the four that you have, the four new officers that you're requesting, the seventy-two, um, salary, that's not starting pay?
No, that's benef- that's benefits and everything.
Okay, inclusive of, okay.
Yes.
I was reading just the line where it says regular salaries and wages, but it's all, it's all in.
Forty-six six is, um, the starting pay. That's everything, benefits and, and everything else included.
So based on.
I'm sorry. Mr. Smith?
No, I'm, I'm good.
So based on that, uh, between that, the equipment and the vehicle, uh, counted one forty, one oh, one hundred and forty thousand, one oh five per officer for those fours at.
Uh, that's probably about, pretty close, yes, sir. You got fifty thousand dollars for the vehicle, um, it's, I think, eighteen thousand dollars each for the, no, I'm sorry, somewhere around that for equipment. And then, um, the seventy-two thousand dollars, all in salary benefits, little security tax tag out the door.
Also, ju- just a little line item here I saw, but I thought I'd seen it in other wish lists as well, so don't, we're overlapping, but just the update of the gym equipment. I know that all the officers, fire, everybody uses that, of course, to keep fit, so, I don't know if, wasn't that in other places as well, I thought?
Yeah, you've seen that in other places as well. The fire department usually budgets a portion, and then the police department budgets a portion. We were trying to budget a little bit in each one to replace equipment every year, to buy a new piece every year.
Okay.
So, um.
So that's not an overlap of the same thing, it's actually.
Right, it's a portion.
So they want to really need each of them to, to see that, part of the wish list?
Right.
Okay.
We tried to prepare a budget, and I tried to make sure this budget was as transparent as it could be and that, you know, I put everything in bold red to show you what we did, what the, where the increases were, where there were no increases. I think, uh, in the majority of the cases, you're going to find that, uh, we didn't ask for or need an increase in the majority of our budget areas, so.
It, it looks like, if I'm counting this right, that the total wish list of all the pages is eight hundred, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine fifty. Is that right, or am I double counting some things here? I didn't see any overall total, just page totals.
Yeah, I don't know that there was. We had to do it each page, each wish list for each department, uh, so we didn't have a total page.
So if we could do all the wishes at this point, that would be eight, eighty-seven, nine fifty?
I don't have in front of me to do the math, so I'll, I'll take your math, I'll take your math for granted. I knew it was going to be somewhere around a million dollars.
Around, yeah.
Okay.
But again, the, the focus really needs to be on the additional police officers. Some of the other stuff we can look at as the budget starts to recover, as the economy recovers, and, and we'll come back to you and ask for those. Some of them we may be able to pick up if we have cost savings throughout the year and, and do some of the wish list stuff, uh, with Mr. Bass's approval and the mayor's approval. Uh, but at this point in time, I think we need to focus on more police officers.
And I just want to say there, and I, I think all of us would say, you, you've done a tremendous job. Our police department has done a tremendous job in a very challenging year in many different ways. And, uh, you know, I want to do what we can to try and get those officers and see what we can do to, to support what you're doing.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, chief.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
All right, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next up, IT. Just so you know, it's kind of a, we had a great, um, meeting with all the department heads and, and Rob, because we've got so many different software packages, some that are integrated, some that aren't, and so we sat down with all of the department heads, okay, what does this do? How does it, how does it integrate with other departments? And do we need it? Is it outdated? And so as he goes through, there are a lot of these things that we were able to just get rid of because it's some legacy program that two people use. So, um, I'll give Rob and the, and the, and the whole team really credit for going through and really analyzing what we could get rid of, but also some new programs that, and I know that Public Works is looking at to really try to, to tie their, all those departments together, which will hopefully save us money over the long haul. So, Rob, thanks for, for putting that meeting together and, and, you know, getting us all on the same page or as close as we can to all be on the same page.
All right, well, Mayor, thank you for allowing me to be here. Commissioners, to go over our budget, um, this year, um, or the coming year coming up, due to the current, uh, economic situation we're in, it's going to be a fairly static budget. I'm not going to go, um, heavily into detail as, um, maybe the fire department did, but I will go over each line with you and kind of see if there's any questions with it. And of course, I'll give you a high overview of where we are, what we've done, and what we hope to accomplish in the coming year. Currently, our staffing, we are set for seven people total. I have, uh, myself, the IT director, I have an IT supervisor, there's a computer support specialist, desktop support engineer, and two systems administrators. We have a new addition to us, um, from twenty-nineteen, which is going to be our web and, uh, social media analyst, and she's been doing a great job for us so far. Some of the services we provide for the entire city, and, uh, you'll notice that our budget, um, some of our numbers are quite large in there, some of the line items for a small department, but it's not necessarily our department that this is actually for, this is for the entire city. So we support the entire city, police, fire, community development, mayor's office, uh, the city clerk, the city administrator, community div- or utility billing, finance, public services, um, any, every division in between that. So some of the lines for a small department seem kind of, uh, uh, out of, uh, proportion, but it's truly because we are representing the entire city. So as of today, um, we have a total of four hundred and forty employees that we represent, full-time, part-time, seasonal, or fifty-two. Mobile devices such as iPads, tablets, and cell phones, there's two hundred and ninety-two of those. Telephones, which will include soft phones, IP, and analog, we have two hundred and eighty-three that we maintain, as well as our entire phone system. We, and take care of our PBX internally. Uh, radios, uh, this was something we took over about a year and a half ago that was maintained by the police department, but we now maintain that. And we have four hundred and eighty-five portable and mobile radios. Police department-wise, body cams, we have just over a hundred body cams that we, uh, maintain those for them, as well as video and backups. Dash cams inside their vehicles, there's twelve. Laptops, and these are throughout the entire city, is a hundred and forty-two. Uh, we're going to discuss those a little further because some of these are actually coming to air their, their, uh, usable lifestyle, especially in the vehicles, starting and stopping, and the screen slamming down and cracking, and, um, keyboards, motherboards, the cellular going out on as well, but we'll, we'll cover that here shortly. Um, we also do interior, exterior site monitoring and security. We have a hundred and fifty cameras that are, uh, maintained throughout the city and report to, uh, three different NBRs where we can, uh, review, uh, needed footage if necessary. Desktops, we have virtually, we're still at a higher level percentage for virtual machines, we're at a hundred and ninety-four, and physical machines, we're at a hundred and thirty-seven. Um, hoping to actually increase some of the physical machines throughout the city to give the users a better experience. A lot of the applications now are a little more graphics intense, there's a lot more video that they're watching, training online, and some of that takes its toll on the virtual machines. Uh, they just don't have the graphics, or I'm not sharing, or not sharing or able to share enough graphic GPU to spread it out and give them the great experience which they would on a physical machine. These work, uh, virtual machines work great for, uh, data entry and your normal, um, users per se, but anybody doing any type of CAD, uh, heavy, um, uh, heavy viewing of any type of, uh, streaming, some of the virtual machines will tend to have an issue. And there's not a lot of municipalities that actually jump into that technology. They'll use it for kiosks and, uh, so low, low level fruit, or low hanging fruit machines, if you will. Servers, so we have currently forty-nine virtual servers in our virtual environment. Uh, we have forty physical machines, which also encompass our, uh, storage, our storage arrays and backup appliances. Accomplishments this year, last year, we actually had budgeted for, uh, new backup appliances, which was had been fully amended, or fully implemented into our data center. Uh, those allow for, uh, I was not going to say instantaneous backup, but allows us to restore some of our virtual servers if something should happen to them. And we constantly make backups, and currently we're restoring that data indefinitely. Uh, computer lab installed at the Billy Dean Community Center, and we set up their computer lab, as well as security cameras around that facility as well. Uh, for the website, for ADA accessibility, we've, uh, implemented AudioEye. Um, if you look at our website, you'll actually see a toolbar on the side, if that'll pop up, and it allows visually impaired users. Uh, it provides them with a, a bunch of tools, whether they're colorblind, um, they need to increase the size of the text, or, um, what have you. These are just, um, tools for the actual site itself, it's not for any type of documents that get put on there. We stuff to make sure the documents going up are done in a compliant format. Um, as, uh, Chief Wyland mentioned, the, uh, fire alarm alerting at night that was implemented in this past year, um, we did a low-down dirty, uh, eight thousand dollar, uh, solution. It gets the job done, um, it's nowhere near the Cadillac, uh, that we were looking for, but, um, currently is working for it. And maybe in the future, uh, if money becomes a little more available, that we can make a use case to get a, uh, a better solution for it. Public safety tower, uh, city purchased a, uh, new tower back at the end of twenty-sixteen, and we had a couple of locations that fell through as far as where the tower was going to go. This, uh, previous year, we were able to work with, uh, CFX and obtain a parcel off of, uh, Mount Plymouth Road. Uh, currently, the, uh, tower is actually, um, well underway out there. They're going to be installing the building for our, um, radios and supplies, scheduled to be the first of next week. Public Services is working with us and actually getting us a temporary road out to the location where they're actually going to put the crane out there to lift the building up off of it. So they're actually working on it this morning, I'm kind of making sure everything goes great with this. I'm anticipating that this tower should be up and functional before the end of the year. Uh, amphitheater, around the apron of the amphitheater, we've added additional Wi-Fi access points for, uh, when the concerts, uh, do start back up, and it was before the whole COVID came in. Um, so there was additional, uh, Wi-Fi coverage down there for it. Our VMware infrastructure, we upgraded our servers, um, we have three new servers that we were able to purchase through funds this year. And I'm hoping to get some additional for our VDI side coming up, which we'll discuss. With the, uh, again, COVID, uh, pandemic here, we've had to create a YouTube channel to start live streaming for the, uh, public, um, try to keep the amount of people in the council chambers down here. That required us purchasing camera and all the necessary hardware to actually start streaming it up there. Um, currently, as you see, we have a camera sitting in the back of the room that gets the back of the audience and the front of council, and this will be another, something on our wish list that I'm hoping we can kind of look forward to, uh, do as upgrading the audio and video in here. Implemented social media policy, um, Kelly has established a weekly newsletter, we used to send out monthly, but now we're hitting it, uh, weekly. It's electronic, you can sign up for it on the website. Man, our web traffic has gone up by fourteen percent. Um, some of the social media statistics for the followers for the city's webpage, there's seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight, the fire has three thousand and sixty-one, and the police have twenty-four, ninety-two. The police department's Facebook page is redone, as it was a personal pa- or a personal account previously, and is now actually set to a page for itself. Instagram is sitting at twenty-five, ninety, and Twitter at two sixty. Instagram and Twitter were not being used prior to Kelly coming over, it was just, uh, platforms that were pretty much dormant for the last three or four years. So the increase of our Facebook followers is up seven percent. Naturally, Instagram and, uh, Twitter are going to look like they went through the ceiling, but that's from October of nineteen until, uh, currently July of twenty. Um, for our views so far with the YouTube streaming, we're at ten thousand, four hundred and two. We have, actually, we're at two hundred and sixty-one subscribers as of this meeting, and there's over thirteen hundred hours of watch time from that. Some of our goals coming up, um, is continue to provide our support, responsive for all cities. And again, this is a entire citywide, uh, effort we put in. I have a great, uh, staff over in the IT department, I couldn't ask for more. I'm not looking for any additional personnel at this time. Another, uh, yeah, another portion is to implement the, uh, hi, uh, audio-video upgrade in the council chambers here, and that's kind of on the wish list, but that will allow for cameras to be, uh, appropriately placed in here and not strung across with cores ring across the floor to, uh, provide our residents and, uh, uh, followers a better actual experience in getting to see, you know, what's going on. They can kind of see you guys up there, but you're a little blurry. Internet streaming solution for the Northwest Recreation, um, Ryan's looking to put together, and I'm not sure of the vendor, I don't know, I shouldn't say the vendor, but they're looking to actually start being able to stream behind all of the backstops from the, uh, softball and baseball cages out there. So in case you can't actually make the game, um, there'll be a streaming solution up there for it, and we'll provide the Wi-Fi or the, uh, internet access needed to come up on for it. This year, we currently were trying to get a new document management, as, uh, Mayor Nelson mentioned, we had a, a meeting looking at overall software. And the so- solution we're going to implement, we're on hold with that right now. Um, we're depending on, depending on what's going on with the funding, if we actually have to hold it for next year, uh, because of the shortage, or if we may implement it, uh, later on in the year. Um, but if not, it's the solution that he's also looking at for public services, for the software they're going to discuss. Um, we also plan on redesigning, updating the existing city website, uh, that's well overdue for that, and that is one of the, uh, goals for hopefully, uh, starting in the beginning of October, if not, sort of shorter than that. And lastly, uh, I pride ourselves on maintaining our uptime on our network services for the entire city. We're still sitting at ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time. And that's, uh, it's a, a good accomplishment for the tech, or the staff we have in IT. So we, we do anything and everything from, uh, you name it, we're doing it, we're not just sitting behind the desk in there, we're hands-on on a lot of stuff, installing a lot of the cameras, um, dealing with gate solutions at this point in time, if it's connected to the internet, um, any way, shape, or form, we usually are our hands into it, or we're asked to help with it. Some of the increases, and I'll, I'll kind of touch on here, and then we'll actually move through on the, uh, the PDF here for the agenda. About under the forty-six hundred line, which is a large line for us, um, about a million dollars of that, it's about one point four million in that line. About a million of that is for the rate, maintenance for Motorola. There's a two percent increase for the P-twenty-five and wireless system, which, uh, you see from the PowerPoint there, it's six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand. So it's a two percent increase over last year, it's about twelve percent more. Um, we are looking at a new endpoint detection and response, it's going to be next generation antivirus. Currently, we have, um, McAfee, and it will be expiring, uh, mid-year coming up here. So we're looking to take it to the next level and actually go on a proactive response as opposed to waiting for something to come through. Now, that's not the only detection we have, we also have sandboxing with our email system and other security measures in place. But unfortunately, our, our weakest, uh, our weakest point is going to be a user who clicks on the unsuspecting email that somehow makes it through, and, and that's usually how we'll end up coming out where if it's going to happen. So I, I fish our, uh, staff quite hard, um, all the in-city employees, and we get a lot of, uh, flack from it, but it does keep them aware that, you know, if you're not expecting somebody to be doing a direct deposit, or, you know, your bank account didn't get changed, you shouldn't be clicking on the email, you should be deleting the email. So we, we do fish them pretty hard, we spoof the domain for apopka.net just to make sure they're paying attention to it, and, uh, it does bring a lot of user awareness for it. Uh, we also added under forty-six hundred, which we didn't have last year, is user management software. That allows to see, uh, what's going on with, uh, users actually either copying stuff off, deleting stuff, um, proprietary, if they're moving anything that has any sensitive data, it's all visually caught on there. I can actually go back and look to see what's going on in the system. But that was actually purchased last year, but now it's moved to maintenance this year. Sixty-three hundred line, the only, uh, item in there is for the Harmon Tower maintenance, and that's for painting. This previous year, I think we had eleven thousand dollars slated for the power, uh, tower to get painted, and that's what I told, or I was told it was going to cost from the, uh, police department at the time. And when I had the, uh, original, uh, tower climbing company that actually does maintenance on these come out and give me a firm quote on it, it came back to just under, uh, thirty-three thousand. So I'll be consulting other, uh, uh, painting firms, but the tower is in need of painting out there, and that will extend the useful life on it, hopefully, a couple of more years. That tower is currently sitting at, uh, just over thirty-one years of use. It's a four-hundred-foot guide, uh, tower out there, and currently, as we sit, I have AT&amp;T that's, would, is really wanting to get on the tower because they want to do it for their, um, first net initiative they have in the area. Unfortunately, we're sitting at just, I think we're close to two hundred percent overloaded on it, so we can't possibly take anybody else's equipment on it, meaning, uh, wind shear rating on that. It's not necessarily the weight of it, it's the actual, the amount of, uh, resistance from the wind hitting it. So of course, with theirs on, they calculated we'd be about three hundred and ten percent overloaded if they put their hardware on it. Um, just today, they did reach out again, and because of the Sprint and T-Mobile merger, they were hoping that maybe one of them would take down some of their antennas so they could get on, but I can't, uh, I can't promise them any of that. could get on, but I can't, I can't promise them any of that. See sixty-four hundred laptops. So we were previously doing a lease on laptops, so we've stopped leasing on those. And we're at four years for the first set of leases we had come in. And the last time I did it in about thirty-three percent of their fleet of laptops, they had about a hundred and twenty laptops and I did, I think right at about forty laptops each time. I think we're right at that area. So to kind of keep the money down or to keep the cost or the request down, I'm looking to do twenty-five percent of their laptops each year. And the laptops have gone up greatly since the time we were leasing it. They're running at about sixteen fifty a piece and those are just for Dell Latitude laptops. They're not ruggedized by any means, but they do come with accidental damage. So if they get fall off the car, somebody hits them, smashes them for the first three years, they'll come out and replace it. Currently, we replace the motherboards on them, the screens when they get cracked, which seems to be a common occurrence. Keyboards, the cellular will go out on it, so we'll have to, again, it's all part of the motherboard and we're doing that in-house just to keep that cost down, but we still have to buy each of those parts for it. So they are due for it. Batteries are continuously dropping, power supplies are going down. So this is a request for the chief here to try to replace twenty-five percent of their fleet. Also, some of the other departments, we constantly borrowing. So Jim Hitt has a laptop here that doesn't see the network, but it's still a, it's a Windows seven and certainly we could put Windows ten on it and keep it current, but it is a machine that's probably six or seven years old and it works for doing what we're doing here, but community error. The city clerk has a, an old machine that I was embarrassed that they still had when Susan was showing it to me a few weeks back that they, I can't believe they still use it. Finance needs a machine so they can do presentations for themselves as opposed to borrowing one. The fire department has a couple that they would like to get in and I need to replace our existing one we have. So we're looking at twenty thousand for that request. CAD machines and dispatch, there's twenty-eight thousand in that request. There's seven positions in the dispatch communication center. They have two different CADs that they currently use, one for police and one for fire. And so each of those machines, there's two at each position for it where I'm coming up with the fourteen machines for it. Those were put in back in twenty-fourteen, I want to say, when we switched over to Global CAD and they're coming due for it. We're starting to have issues with them and we still continue to patch them and make them run, but this is a, this is something I'm hoping we're able to do. VDI servers, those are machines that run our virtual desktops in the background. Currently, we have four in each of our virtual clusters. I have four servers in our server environment for the virtuals and then we also have four for our virtual machines where the end user to use it. So we're looking to actually knock that down and go just to three servers, which will bring that price down below thirty for the three machines. That's one of the things we discussed in our pre-budget meeting. And we can certainly get by with three as I try to get a few more physical machines in place here, we'll be to bring that down and at one point we maybe it'll get down to two servers for the virtual side. I need to keep one server up just for spare in case anything happens and we need to migrate them off, but that is the end goal is to get down to two machines or two servers. And here's some of the duties and tasks we do. I'm going to go back again and touch over each of the line items, but just get a quick rundown of what we do, the support we supply, the document management, security awareness training, help desk operations, hardware support for anything and everything under the sun, software support, email support, telephone support, our VPN for people who are working from the house with the whole COVID. We were switching over and, you know, letting people come in through our firewall. We had to buy a bunch of cameras so they could actually participate in the virtual meetings that we've had throughout the city and that's what the kind of the current state where we're at here. I'm hoping at some point we're able to go back and actually look at each other, but productivity, as long as it's not being hampered, then we're okay with it. And lastly, under that customer support is radio programming. That's another thing that we picked up a year and a half ago and that's, it's not a full-time position for us, but it does keep us on our toes for it. Radios get a lot of damage, knobs, volume knobs crawling off with them, antennas breaking and it's, it's, it's a something, never ending with it. Network management, data center management. If none of you've been over to our data center, Chief McKinley mentioned this new building that they're looking at doing here, but I, I welcome you to come over and kind of see where we're currently working out of. It's a bomb shelter and it used to be a generator room with a live well in it, wet well below the ground and there's still a water tank sitting in there. But it's worked for us, but it's, it's well overdue for us to get out of that room. But that's where we're currently hanging out over in the, the fire department, their main admin, nothing over there. We also do network security, infrastructure management, disaster recovery, application management, web internet administration, database management, mobility management, again for VPNs and Mas three sixty. And that's what we use to actually manage our iPads. If somebody loses an iPad or a phone, we're able to track it for them and we're also controlling what goes on and what goes off. If we need to wipe it, if they lose it, we're able to remote wipe the device or find it again if that's necessary. Project support, we have software application implementations, port generations for various software products that we have. Any initiatives coming through, we try to get notified way ahead of time before anybody's actually pushing it to, to make sure that we're not caught off guard with it. Constant looking to enhance the network, both security as well as physical. And of course, we try to do a system lifecycle replacement on our hardware. That's not always possible again with short funding, public safety and public services will get the majority of the budget and we usually get what's left over and we try to make do with it. Internal network services, so again, the eleven departments are the various utility billing, finance, we'll say IT, I don't necessarily have to put it in there. Mayor's office, the city clerk, community development, public services, police, fire. I'm sure I missed one in there, but again, these are the service we provide for it. Database, email, file storage, hardware, networking, printing, security, which includes cameras. There's some other clamor slated for going in down at our public services facility. Social media, trying to increase our presence on that, make sure we're able to communicate on the various platforms. Any software initiatives coming down, virtualization, voice and website. And that's the end of that PowerPoint. Any questions on that before I jump over to go over the line items? Anybody waking up there?
Just a quick comment. First of all, the, the presentation game was on point there, Rob. That was a very good presentation. I enjoyed it. But I would add to your point on the accomplishments piece, the uptime percentage that the actual that you quoted, I mean, I would slap down the accomplishments. I mean, the goal of, you know, the ninety-nine point nine 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 percent, if we're at ninety-nine point nine 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 five, whatever you quoted, I mean, that's a great thing. That's impressive.
Very rare do we, well, am I even saying that? We're able to maintain that currently and we're able to maintain that level.
Well, before you get to that, let me ask you one question. It said that we have twelve dash cams.
These are police cars.
This is in the police cars. We only have twelve?
That's money. That's all they have for their traffic unit, yes. They're having to money for it. It's unfortunate, but you know, the officers are all wearing body cams, but dash cams, I know they're looking at eventually getting more for it, but currently that's their fleet. I think most of those are going to be their traffic units. They have, you know, dedicate people who may work traffic and that's usually where they would use it for DUI squads. But, you know, certainly it'd be great in every car, but you know, again, that's a financial obligation that we have to take on for it. Okay, so as you see, going through the budget, the operating cost for it, again, under our forty-six hundred line, that's going to be the largest one on, I'll kind of touch through each one, but it's one point three seven million. A million of that is roughly radio maintenance and the software assurance through Motorola. Another hundred thousand is for the Seminole County CAD that the police department uses. And then the rest of it's going to be actual operational software that we maintain for the rest of the city. Capital wise, our capital's gone down lower this year. Again, we don't need the backup appliances. I am looking to actually get a few additional servers for our VDI side, which we touched on. And our, our current servers, they're HP DL three eighties, they're Gen eights and they still run like a top. The issue I have with it is because VMware, which is the software we run that actually runs everything, to get to the version we need for our business continually disaster recovery solution, I need to go up to version six seven. And unfortunately, the Gen eights only support six five. So they kind of get you when they keep changing software on stuff, so we're kind of stuck with, we're having to, you know, step up for it. So the Gen eights that we currently have, I cannot jump up that high in VMware's version of it. I can only get to six five and I need to be at six seven. Our servers, we're able to do that, so those, those are the most important to me. But at this time, our, our actual desktop machines, I'm not able to provide a, a quote unquote, a quick transition should something go down with them. We are working on that now. The nice part about the virtual side is if that somebody's machine were to become compromised, I can certainly delete it from disk and bring it back again. There's nothing locally installed on these machines, but there is a lot of installation that goes to them. And I say, let me take that back. There's nothing stored network wise on these machines. We don't store anything local to the machines. Everything is stored off the network, so in case a machine does go, you've lost nothing other than us having to set it up and put all your applications and get your favorites back in line for you and make your icons look just like they did before you lost it. That's, that's not too bad. Thirty-four hundred, make this bigger if I can. Again, I won't necessarily touch on each of these unless you want me to. These are fairly static from last year. It looks like thirty-four hundred has a, about a twenty thousand increase and that's going to be some additional software for the FireCAD, the ESO software. They have some other modules that they've added, so I had increased the maintenance on that. AudioEye now, which again is our ADA software, that was an eleven thousand dollar maintenance that goes on it. I'm hoping that kind of keeps us out of any issues coming up or any ADA type of suits coming up. It's a fairly robust suite and there's a, there's been a lot of good luck with it. Those pretty much make up the actual increases from last year. I can ask any questions or if there's any questions on here, I can answer with the software, but these are just software that we currently use and have to pay maintenance on. Here and done. So forty-one hundred is communications. Again, that looks like a large line for the IT office, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, but that is actually paying for cellular for everybody's laptop, iPad, phone that has a phone assigned to them. It also covers our internet circuits. Again, we have a primary voice and data circuit and we also have a secondary circuit should anything lose. And we've, we've had issues with one or the other of our internet circuits and so this allows us to maintain connectivity, being that we're in an Office three sixty-five world. If we lose our internet, we lose, we lose a lot of stuff. We lose email and we lose business productivity. So we have a secondary circuit there. We shop around, those are coming up for renewal here, so we'll be certainly shopping around to make sure we are getting the best service for what we're paying for it. We also pay for the clinic. I still have care here on it. I need to change that to the new name for our clinic, but we pay for their net or internet as well. We do have some CenturyLink lines that we have to pay for, for the ISO for the fire departments. There's a couple of actual landlines, or I call them landlines, but hard lines at some of the traffic intersections that Juan from Public Services has set up to give him data. And there is unfortunately a monthly cost to each of those that we still pay. Let's see, Sprint for public services, those are just their standby phones. Our secondary for our Wi-Fi throughout the city that allows Wi-Fi at the parks, the VFW, that allows us to put cameras at any location really if we ever needed to throughout the city, as long as we can get power to it. And if it's truly a high priority for a camera, can run a solar array just to get power to it. And we have some T-Mobile service as well, trying to branch it up a little bit so we're not stuck with one carrier. We use some of theirs for iPads, but we also use a lot of it for vehicle tracking and it's been pretty, that's worked out pretty well with the vehicle tracking as far as accuracy. Shipping, looks like it's going to stay the same or actually looks like it's down a hair. Printing and Chief McKinley mentioned about copiers or he kind of mentioned that we were discussing copiers and under his forty-four hundred line of Department twenty-two twenty, he's got two of his copiers going out December thirty-first of this year. And I don't know that I saw a spot in a Capitol for replacement copy machines for him, so I'll get with him after here that I didn't see anything in his lines as he was going over his budget. So there's a, for the smaller one in his office, it's going to be about a fifteen hundred dollar purchase if we don't lease. And then the bigger one that he's got up front records is about nine thousand. So those will be expenditures that we'll have to address. You know, if they can get away with that, I know they do a lot of printing with theirs, so their one in record or up in records is probably, probably a good idea to get rid of that one. The one in his office, we can look at the actual copies done on that one and see if that's worth keeping. And when I say keeping, there's a potential buyout at the end of the lease. And if it's, if it makes sense to buy it and it's a low, a low count or a low use machine, we can certainly look at that option. We would still pay a, a fee each month to the current company we leased them from and that would cover all the toner, any maintenance on it. We just pay per copy, whatever you're paying for it. We wouldn't be paying any more lease on it.
Yeah, I've asked Rob to look at all of our copiers because our copier bill every month is, is tremendous. So I'm, I say, you know, look at leasing versus purchasing for all the departments and see if we can't save some, some money there across the copier world because.
We try to, try not to print anything that we don't have to, but there are still necessary, necessary print jobs that have to happen. Community development's a big printer. The police department records naturally is a big printer and their bills are fairly stout each month. I get my forty-six hundred line and it's gone. So the forty-six hundred, I, I try to be very specific on what's going in that actual line and I will name every item going into it just so there's no question about it. There we go, perfect. All right, so running down here, this one is saying fairly statics for VMware maintenance, the first line item up there. That's actually down a hair from last year. If I'm dropping off maintenance on one of these machines on our server environment, that cost potentially will go back down. The increase that you will see in this line is going to be the second line item, the Observe IT. That's, was purchased last year under the software portion of it and that's the user management software. And so now that has turned to maintenance each year. As the mayor said, we went over some of the different software suites we have. Content versus actually document management that we've had here for a long time and that's the system we were going to be upgrading for Laserfish. And that may still happen possibly this year or it may get put off for next year, but that is currently the current system we use. Splunk is a syslog management solution, just to kind of sort through the tons and tons of data that come in from anything, everything we have pointed to it, syslogs. Property appraiser, that's an annual maintenance fee we have to pay. Access points, Marquee, there's a few of them that are, that are not under a five-year maintenance warranty. So these are clouded access points that we have internally throughout the city, not the ones that they like the park at Williams Park or Rec, or Northwest Rec or Kitlein Nelson Park. Those are on a different network. These are internal access points that are used for internal business. Hazery's the GIS mapping support. We pay for public services, police, community development, their, their licenses for their software. The XIO is a storage, it's a hybrid solution. It's out of warranty of any type. I don't even know if they're actually going to put this under, so that's potentially be nine thousand coming back if they don't allow us to. That storage is going on seven years old and it's served us well. We're currently using it for our NBRs, for our security cameras throughout the city. We're repurposing it. Server maintenance, HP. We used to use HP specifically going through the original maintenance on that and that was getting to be about twenty, twenty-five thousand a year. We are now going through a second market on some of the vendors that will actually provide service for our servers and they still give us the same support as we were going directly through HP, but at a huge savings. Brocade hardware, we're a brocade shop for all of our network switches. That's fairly static. Our firewall, we have two firewalls currently through Palo Alto, ones for the, our recreation facility, or not recreation, but the water reclamation facility down at Public Services. They have their own network for their SCADA so that it stays off the entire system. And of course, we have our firewall that anything, everything runs through. We have additional routers coming through, PepLink routers. Those bring in the, the outside Wi-Fi, bring it into the internal network and there's some security handoff inside that. Mitel software assurance, that's just for our PBX. It allows us to get the latest, greatest software when they come out for it. Seminoles Cafe, that's their CAD system over at Seminole County that covers the RSA tokens, any updates to the mapping that we, we do in the city annexations, so they take care of all of that. Mimecast email archiving, this is one of the big ones for us, we relay our email through We relay our email through Mimecast. We are using Office 365 through Microsoft, and we do relay through Mimecast, which gives us some extra protection coming through. Should something happen to the Office 365 side, we would still function in our environment. Sometimes the attachments will get stripped out of this because it's looking at it and it sees that there's something it doesn't like about it, and if somebody's calling us, we usually go in and take a look and say, okay, it is a malicious attachment, or, you know, it just, it didn't like it, or it tripped off something. There's a very fine line for our email archive setting up spam and garbage email coming through it, and we try to, you know, try to let email come through that people need, but sometimes there's the mayor from the, or the email from the mayor's office saying he needs to go buy him some eBay cards at the local store, and that he's on a meeting and he can't talk to you right now thing. So those will make it through periodically, and it's interesting to see who's paying attention to it. Laserfish, again, that's the software documented management that we're kind of hoping to go enterprise-wide on. It's currently being used in the city clerk's office.
Hey, Rob, for basically everything that says annual renewal, is that just a contractual renewal amount?
For Laserfish?
No, for any of the, all of them, because there's no need to go line by line.
Okay, I just wanted to, I wasn't sure if you want specific. I don't mind, again, the change in it is a hair increase, as I showed you in the PowerPoint.
The only, yeah, the only thing that I would be interested in is stuff that we could take action on, because if these are contractually committed, then we really can't do much with them, right? So I'm good.
Good deal. Bring this back down to reality here, and we'll move on.
I would just be more interested in the ones that are coming up for renewal.
Sure.
That we would want to explore cheaper options.
All right, minimize this. 4,600 line gets a little crazy. All right, so vehicle maintenance, that actually will increase a little bit this year. We've got an older vehicle, and we've had a few issues with it last year, so we will increase that up to 1,000. Office supplies, that's not just our office. Anybody who's needing something coming in, if they run out of something, this is a line that's used to purchase any type of office supplies. You know, if somebody's truly needing, and I kind of cater to the mayor's office or the city administrator's office, if they're needing something, everybody has their office supply purchased, but sometimes I'm asked for, I need this, and I have to respond pretty quick with it. Operating under 5,200, there's not a huge change in there. Towards the bottom, you'll see some iStock images. That allows us to take different images for the social media posts, so that we're not using anybody's copyright materials and we're not getting in trouble for it. And of course, there's another $1,000 for Facebook posting, boosting some of the posts that we put out for it. That is pretty much static from last year. Fuels roughly the same. Publications the same. Training, we're using Stormwinds, which is a web-based training for entire department, allows for Microsoft VMware training, so we can do it at our own pace, and some of the texts, they want to get certifications through it. There's the tower maintenance, 23,000 for that. Okay, let's up up. This is the last line that's actually going to have anything in it. And I think I've kind of covered that in the PowerPoint itself. Again, replacement laptops, laptops in general for the city, servers, and copy machine buyout. Am I missing any lines?
So we don't have, you touched on it earlier, the lease that we used to have with Dell that wouldn't cover some of this?
Well, yeah, if we decided to go back on the lease, at this time, the direction we've been given is to either purchase, and depending on the cost of something to purchase, he's outright. So the lease is an option, and, you know, of course, you pay a third of that cost going forward with it. That's why we actually did more last time, but the direction we're going now is purchasing, and I can't remember the threshold on it, and that's kind of like the copiers as well. We were looking at doing a purchase as opposed to a lease on it. Certainly, you know, that's open, you know, with the mayor, discussion-wise. Our copier, like I say, we don't, we're not pounding out a bunch of copies of anything. We try to keep everything electronic, you know, we do print, but if we need to buy ours, our would be a potential candidate to do so if we needed to. I believe that's going to wrap up the big lines. There is a, a little bit of a wish list that kind of goes over what Chief McKinley said. It kind of mentions on the public safety multi-zone solution, but he's already kind of mentioned on to, you know, what that was for. We are currently doing it, again, on a cheaper, kind of sliding by the skin of our teeth, but it's working and we're in compliance, so we're not, we're not in jeopardy of, you know, not being, ever being out of compliance of it. So the replacement of the servers, as I mentioned, I have four up there, but we can actually look at doing three of those if it's possible. One of the things I did not include in my budget, it was more of the wish list portion, is the actual capabilities for us to stream video from here. Of course, that'll basically do an overhaul of the audio and video of everything projector-wise. We can pre-shoot forward at the screen up, or at the actual top of the dais up here, the wall. We'd also have a touchscreen is what I'm envisioning for this over here, so we can present and actually draw on it, and you would actually see what they're doing. This would potentially go away so that people in the row aren't breaking their necks trying to look over and see what we're talking about, and of course, when we're shooting across here, especially when the sun's coming in, you're not really seeing much of anything anyways. So we would completely revamp the entire system in here and include streaming capabilities, a minimum of three cameras, preferably four. Some of the stuff, you know, I know we could do internally, but the issue comes down to time, how long can I shut down the council chambers and actually do what we need to do, and if there's a meeting coming up, you know, I could potentially move us to the VFW Community Center, but I don't want to put anyone out on this, so I would look at actually having somebody do a turnkey solution for us, and that would include the ADA captioning, the ability for us to store, people could do on-demand video if they want to, you know, look at it again. Yeah, so we can do a lot of that with YouTube, so we can go back and look at it. But again, you know, we are the second-largest municipality in Orange County, and I think we're kind of, I think we're there. We need to actually step up and provide a better experience, I think, for our residents that can't make it or choose to stay at the house, especially at these times.
Are you saying projection or actual video?
More likely a projector shooting at that wall. I'd love to shoot straight ahead to capture more of the audience in here, but we have the logo up there that would be covered if the screen actually came down for it. So we'd actually use a static wall instead of a drop screen, which would keep it, the cost down on that, and then we'd use a laser projector to shoot at it, so it'd be nice and crisp. But the problem is, you all wouldn't see what's up there. The audience would see it, you know, people in here would get a good experience, which is where the touchscreen would come in here, so I can actually annotate what I'm trying to show you.
But we'll see the same here.
You would see the exact same thing, yes.
Yeah, looks really good. We'll need to install one down here.
Well, that's what I'm talking, that's what we're looking to do, is truly replace everything, but it's, it really is an older system, and, you know, if I, you know, I know it's a big expense request for it, it's not something that, you know, in IT, we're going to use every day, meaning we're not going to use it, it's truly for all the meetings that go on. There's a planning commission, there's, you know, the city council meetings, the budgets, the code enforcement hearings. There's a lot of meetings that go on that truly could be, you know, presented, as well as PSAs to the rest of the city, and we can use Kelly for some of these, you know, making smaller, smaller PSAs, and, you know, if we decide to get on the Popka TV channel, we can start injecting video to that as well, but that's, you know, we can, we can finally get up there. I don't know that it'll cost a full 200,000, it'll be more likely 150, but that's for any unforeseen, and again, a lot of this is going to be labor of getting the actual hardware strung through the ceiling and actually, actually getting it up to it, so it's, it's unfortunate, but it's going to be a huge labor portion of that cost for it. Camera data storage, we had some for this year, we slated it, but we've mixed that product trying to save money, again, because of the current climate we're in. Desktop replacement computers, I'd like to try to get some additional machines, and I can get an actual small form factor, a micro form factor machine that will do more than what we need to do for each position, and those are coming in right about 700 right now. So that 30,000 would probably come down a little lower, because I don't necessarily need that many, I can handle 30 machines coming in. Phone system upgrades, allow for video voice conferencing currently, if we want to do any type of phone calls or phone conferencing, there's, we're limited on how many we can do with our existing system, and that's truly three. I can certainly use free conference call and set that up, but, you know, we have the capability with our system, we just have to pay for additional licensing. Video conferencing-wise, you know, there's all kind of free stuff out, Zoom, GoTo, they have free versions of it. We're using licensed ones for the Zoom meetings that we currently do, just because we have more control over it, and we can go a little bit longer with them, but there are options if we don't want to necessarily go, you know, upgrade the voice and video of our phone system. So we can get by with that, it would be nice to kind of use the technology we have, but we can certainly use the other third-party apps for it. And in dispatch, the KVMs, keyboard, video, mouse, they switch, they have about seven positions at each, each seat they're at as far as computers, and by the mean positions, there are seven different resources coming in, and they have to be able to switch from machine to machine to machine fairly quick, so there's a shortcut on the keyboard that they'll actually enter to it, and there's a KVM in the background that's actually switching for them, it's just responding to their input, and those machines are kind of on the blink, we're having to kind of go in there, sporadically unplug, drop them, pick them up, put them back in, and they just magically start working again. Unfortunately, they're way out of support, but again, that's on the wish list for them. They're still able to manually move around if they have to in a pinch, but it's, it's a convenient and a little bit of a safer method for them to have to reach down and try to find the KVM if it's been pushed back on the shelf. And lastly, that large public system, again, for the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Act, they were saying that you must be able to, you know, talk to everybody's radio that's within the area that you have the ability to receive a 911 call from, and again, this being a Motorola project, a lot of this isn't programming, and it allows us to all be in the same zone, seamlessly work with each other currently, as he said, and I'm not going to make this go much longer. We are in a zone all by itself, we have our own encryption key, and anytime we need to do anything for the Central Florida area, and all agencies are able to use each other's radio system, but we have to manually enter everybody's radio ID into our system, because we are, we are a unique island, we are, we are our own entity, if you will. This would allow us to seamlessly, whether Orange County or Orlando actually added it, we would actually get added, and our system would be upgraded as well with that. And of course, it would, we definitely meet the requirements that we need to with this multi-zone configuration setup, but that's, that's a huge wish list, and I certainly see that getting pushed down the road, because we are currently meeting that solution. Any questions?
Any questions?
Sorry, that took me longer than I wanted to.
Good, good, good.
Well, I'm going to be the first to say, I would definitely like to see the city council chamber upgraded. As you said, we're the second-largest city in the county, and there are other cities that are much smaller than we are, that are far more advanced than we are for our chamber meetings are concerned, and some people were surprised that we just started live-streaming our meetings once COVID came about, and so I, I'm definitely in favor of seeing it happening. And, but I heard you say that we would have to have the council meeting someplace, you couldn't do that overnight?
Not necessarily, I don't think that myself and my staff, I can't tear us away from our regular duties to do this full-time for, you know, a week and a half. Certainly, we would schedule it on a long, you know, after the last council meeting, there was a three-week interval between the next council meeting, that would be the opportune time to do it, but.
Right.
The programming of the system, getting everything set up, the controllers, the switchers, you know, cutting holes in the desk, the current right now, there's cables that run under this podium that actually run up to the dais that we don't truly know 100% where they go, I just know that there's conduit that's very small, and if we break a cable off and we lose it, then we're, then we're in trouble. So I'd rather pay somebody to actually do that and make it their problem if they have to cut the floor up or whatever it is, and they've got, you know, X number of days to do this. So currently, that, that projector cable runs down that wall, along that face of that wooden wall on the ground, comes up in our Commissioner Becker's feet, and runs over to the switcher over here. So that's, I know how some of the stuff gets here, and we can certainly do some of it, but the ceiling will not support us to walk up in there. We've kind of crawled up in the opening over here, and it's a suspended steel, ceiling that is actually drywall, but there's an I-beam that runs roughly at this first row of lights that are out here, are the speakers, and, you know, we could kind of, you know, tightrope walking across that thing, but we would truly need a scissor lift in here, and, you know, we need to make sure the right stuff's down on the floor so it's not getting destroyed. So there's a lot entailed doing it, you know, the camera-wise, Bob is very talented with the audio portion of it. He's got a lot of audio experience, video, we're just kind of getting into, because it's nobody's, you know, it's not necessarily an IT thing, but we're certainly going to run with it and do whatever we can to make it successful for you and the, you know, the rest of the city. Again, I'd love to have another camera sitting up here looking backwards or looking at the actual podium, the city administrator, or even over at the media side, or even actually